Unified School District Board of Trustees and Pleasanton City Council. Traditionally, the these meetings have been chaired by the mayor. But unfortunately, I may have to jump off for a little while around seven o'clock. So I have asked Board President Mayor if he would please chair the meeting. So it's all yours, Steve.
Okay. And Jerry, if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Becky, roll call.
Trustee Arkin.
Here.
Trustee Larson.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Right here.
Board Vice President Yi.
Here.
Board President Maher.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Penton.
Here.
Councilmember Testa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Narum.
Here.
Mayor Thorne.
Here.
Okay. Now we're moving on to item number three, public comment from the audience regarding items not listed on the agenda. Just a reminder, because items are not on the agenda, then the board or the council will not be discussing what you may bring up. But certainly, we're open to listening. So Becky, do we have some?
Yes, we do. The first speaker is Ramisha Imadi.
President Maher, I don't see her in the waiting room.
It's a heat. Ramesh, it sounds like Ramesh Imadi.
Yes.
Ramesh is not in the waiting room, not at this time.
Okay.
Okay. Next, we have Adriana Santos.
President Maher, Adriana is not in there in the waiting room either.
Are they getting knocked off by any chance, or?
No, they just haven't joined the meeting for whatever reason. There are five people in there now, so.
Okay. And go to our third person.
The card we have is John Bauer.
John Bauer is not among the people in the waiting room.
Okay. The next speaker card we have is Rachel Weisong.
Ah, we got one. President Maher?
Yes.
Rachel, I'm getting a message from Zoom saying that she has an older version of Zoom. So we got to bring her in as a panelist for her to speak. So just wanted to let you know.
Okay.
I apologize, I'm on my computer. I just, I wanted to address the council as a parent in the community. And I know a lot of our COVID restrictions come from the county. But as a parent here in Pleasanton, I've been really frustrated that none of our parks are open for our children to use. I don't see how wearing masks and social distancing at our parks couldn't allow our children to go down slides and swing and climb based on, you know, the transition of COVID and what we know and using hand sanitizer on hands and parents' vigilance and the fact that they've all just been empty for so long and our kids are aching to do something outside and in our communities. And I just wanted to address the council to ask that if anything can be done to open our parks and to allow some community and recreation for our kids who have lost a lot this year. Almost nothing is available to them. And I really would appreciate your consideration on that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Board President Maher, while we can't discuss it, we can ask staff to answer her, respond to her. Can we do that?
It's really, um, school board, we do not, I'm not saying you do not, or the council cannot. Occasionally, they may respond. Jerry, is Jerry still here? Carla, or not Carla, but Kathy, do we allow directed to staff members?
Jerry's muted.
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry, yeah, we do allow
Okay.
Members to ask questions of people that have made a presentation.
Okay. Well, what about questions that are brought up in the public comment?
Yeah, public comment.
Okay.
Why don't I, why don't I just jump in and question and? So the good news is the county announced today that we've moved from the purple tier to the red tier, which begins to loosen up some of the restrictions countywide. The, they'll be making more formal announcements here in the next week to 10 days about exactly what those modifications are. Just a reminder, those tiers are established by the state. And the more restrictive provision of the health order prevails. And the county has informed the cities that they tend to implement the more conservative provisions to ensure public health. The county remains a hotspot, so they're very mindful of how they release and expand those restrictions countywide. Playgrounds are still specifically identified as a restricted activity. It's really unfortunate. And we are monitoring that. I'm not, it's not clear to me sitting here at the moment without the information in front of me as to whether or not playgrounds will be lifted from that as a result of going from the purple tier to the red tier. We'll have more information on our website just as soon as we get it. I would encourage the public to look at it. It's www.cityofpleasantonca.gov. It's got all the current information. And just as, just as soon as we get it and translate it, we put it on our website for the public to view.
Nelson, is it correct that we must remain in red for 14 days consecutive?
It's correct.
Was there any other movement?
Yes.
Julie, did that answer your question, or do you have another one?
Oh, I, it answered the speaker's question, I think, that it is not up to the city to make that decision, but that we are eager to open as soon as the county allows. Thank you, yes.
Any more additional public comments?
I see that John Bauer is now here.
Okay, hopefully, everybody can hear me. Thank you. So as a result of the peaceful protest of over 2000 on June 5th, the city council has had three special city council meetings regarding PPD, with the fourth and last scheduled meeting to be on October 1st. During these meetings, many speakers advocated for the termination of both the DARE program and SROs. They referenced scientific research that not only are these programs ineffective, but can be detrimental to the students. I was disappointed that at the last city council PUSD liaison meeting, that the sole member of the liaison committee who supported having this topic added to tonight's agenda was Valerie Arkin. This topic has been added as an agenda item for discussion at the October PUSD city council liaison meeting. Some members of the liaison committee stated that this topic of terminating DARE and SROs should involve the full bodies of PUSD and the city council. During the October liaison committee meeting, a date should be set in January or February of 2021 for another, for another joint meeting between the PUSD board and the city council to discuss the termination of both DARE and SROs. Thank you.
Additional public comments?
Um, I don't see Adriana Santos or Mr. Imadi in the waiting room, so. We are done under public comment.
Okay. Well, now move to item number four, youth commission tobacco and vaping update by the city. There is a comment card, but we'll take that after the joint boards and council here hear the report. So Nelson?
You're on mute, Nelson.
Okay, technology. So I will make the introduction of the presenter here tonight. Larissa Cito is our Assistant City Attorney. She led this effort along with our Parks and Recreation Department and the Youth Commission. I will also say that this is really a joint effort. The issue was first raised at a few of our liaison meetings, a few times at our council meetings, and of course, at your board meeting. And so we wanted to share the highlights of the work that the council put into it and the new ordinances that will go into effect here at the end of the calendar year. And then take any questions or comments from the panelists and invite comment from the public. So Larissa?
Thank you. So we're here tonight to give you an update with regard to the new city regulations with regard to tobacco and vaping, or what's known as e-cigarettes. We've titled this as the Youth Commission update because the Youth Commission here in Pleasanton has been very instrumental in moving this forward as part of the city council priorities. And so we wanted to provide the Board of Trustees an update, as well as give the city council a chance to jointly discuss this health issue for our community. The Youth Commission has been active in this matter with first beginning with the information gathering that they commenced in May of 2019, where they listened to speakers from many different agencies, including the Tobacco Control Program of Alameda County Department of Public Health, as well as other speakers. In addition, their own Public Policy Subcommittee undertook significant research about usage, underage usage of tobacco products. Based on this, the Youth Commission was effectively a policy catalyst to suggest and recommend policies with regard to flavored tobacco and electronic cigarettes, those items that they had researched and found that youth were using in a disproportionate number. These youth commissioners then made presentations to our Planning Commission, Human Services Commission, Economic Vitality Committee, and the city council. And I must say, as many of the Board of Trustees know and our council members know, our youth here in Pleasanton are very articulate. And when they can give testimonial as to what they experienced in either the school bathroom or other public places in terms of their peers smoking or using e-cigarettes is very compelling testimony. So the city moved forward, and as I said, these are part of the city council work plan priorities, and adopted ordinances after their own series of five meetings to adopt new city regulations regarding tobacco. That includes prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco citywide, as well as prohibiting the sale of electronic smoking devices, those are what we call e-cigarettes, and the related paraphernalia. In addition, no tobacco retail sites, excuse me. Then we also are requiring minimum package sizes and pricing for tobacco products in the city and prohibiting new tobacco retail sites within 1,000 feet of public schools, public parks, and public recreation facilities. And finally, to make sure that all of the retailers comply, will require tobacco retailers to obtain a city tobacco retailer permit that is subject to enforcement. So with regard to the sale of flavored tobacco, flavored tobacco involves both combustible tobacco, chewing tobacco, and electronic cigarette liquids. And so this applies to tobacco stores, what people see as grocery stores, convenience stores, gas stations, as well as tobacco stores. Those are the places that have age-restricted entry, where more than 60% of their revenue is from tobacco products. So many of you have also seen in the news that the state of California adopted their own flavored tobacco ban, SB 793. And the city of Pleasanton, on the left-hand side of your screen, the left-hand column, and the state of California on the right-hand column, both prohibit the exact same flavors of tobacco products, those sweet flavors, the menthol flavors, the candy flavor, the alcohol flavor, the spice flavors. So we're prohibiting all the same tobacco flavors. What differentiates the city and the state bans is the city doesn't allow for any exceptions to our flavored tobacco ban, whereas the state has an exemption for loose-leaf tobacco. Those would be flavored tobacco for people who smoke pipes and put the loose tobacco in their pipe, or for people who roll their own cigarettes. Also, the state exempts premium cigars that are hand-rolled cigars that cost at least $12 each. And then they're also exempting tobacco that is used in hookah pipes. What is favorable for the city in this situation is SB 793 includes a specific provision that says if there's a conflict between state law and local law, the stricter rule applies. So in this case, because the city does not provide for any exemptions for our flavored tobacco ban, those three exemptions that the state is providing for won't be allowed to be sold in Pleasanton. So our complete flavored tobacco ban will stay in effect. I should note that the state of California does prohibit tobacco flavor enhancers, which is not something that our own flavored tobacco ban included. So those items will be banned statewide, including in the city of Pleasanton. The second item of our regulations are prohibiting the sale of electronic smoking devices and related paraphernalia. As I said, this includes electronic cigarettes, vape pens, e-hukas, e-cigars, vaporizers, electronic pipes, and all those kinds of items. In addition, we're prohibiting the sale of what I'm calling the related paraphernalia, the atomizers, the liquid pods, the batteries, the chargers, all those items. So all those items won't be able to be sold citywide, whether we're talking about the retail store or the tobacco store, they're no longer allowed. The third item is minimum package size and pricing for tobacco product. Our youth commissioners learned and probably know from their own experience that youth tend to be very price-sensitive. They're often experimenting with different items, only want to try it in small amounts. We've even received testimony that people wanted to buy small amounts, so it's easier to hide from their parents. So only federal law requires that cigarettes be sold in minimum packages of 20. And what the Youth Commission saw is that cigarettes, little cigars and cigarettos are all similar in size to cigarettes. So what was proposed and adopted by the city is that we'll require little cigars and cigarettos to also be sold in packs of at least 20. So this example here of three mini cigarettos being sold will no longer be allowed in Pleasanton. Also, subject to our minimum package size and pricing restrictions, cigarettes will have to be at least $8 a pack plus tax. Little cigars and cigarettos, as I just mentioned, have to be sold in packs of at least 20 and the minimum price a dollar. So this example of single little cigars and little cigarettos singles at $1.19 will no longer be allowed in Pleasanton. Cigars will have to be sold in packages of minimum of five and have to be a minimum price of $8. However, one person can buy an individual cigar for $7. Those tend to be the more premium cigars that aren't popular with young people. And finally, no coupons, discounts, or free items are allowed, so that the minimum prices are truly the prices that people have to pay. The next aspect of the new city regulations are no tobacco sales within 1,000 feet of public schools, parks, or recreation facilities. This is what I'll call the 1,000-foot buffer around youth-oriented sites, because we know that many young people walk or bike to schools or parks, and they often stop for snacks on the way home or the way there. So we wanted to, and the interest was limiting their exposure to these tobacco products at the point of sale, because they're often at the cash register. We are allowing existing businesses to continue these sales, as seven of the other cities in Alameda County have allowed. But those existing sites cannot expand or relocate within that 1,000-foot buffer. So as those sites start going out of business, they can't relocate there. And the final aspect of the new city regulations is tobacco retailer permitting. This is because we have found out that the majority of young people reported that they were able to actually, the underage young people buying tobacco products, buy them at physical locations. So the goal is to make sure that the retailers enforce the rules. Currently, there are 45 businesses in Pleasanton that are licensed by the state of California to sell tobacco products. Pleasanton's new rule requires them to obtain a permit from the city, and they will be subject to inspections at least twice a year to make sure they're complying with all of our local rules. Violations of a city rule, whether it's our prohibition on flavored tobacco, e-cigarettes, minimum package size and pricing, state laws or federal laws, count as a violation against the city permit. And violations of our city permit can result in, the first violation would be a suspension of the sale of tobacco products for 30 days, the second violation, suspension of the sale of tobacco products for 12 months, and the third violation, suspension, excuse me, revocation of the permit. So there are significant penalties, which we expect will enforce and make tobacco retailers properly sell their products to the right age person. Finally, just to review what the effective date of these restrictions are, the prohibition of new retail sites within that buffer took effect on September 18th, 30 days after the ordinance was adopted. The ban on flavored tobacco will go into effect January 1st, the same as the state law SB 793. That's the same date the city's ban on electronic smoking devices goes into effect, as well as our requirement for minimum package size and pricing. And part of the rationale was to give existing businesses a chance to sell their inventory and change their business model. And finally, all tobacco retailers have to have their permits in place by January as well. And then in 2021, inspections will start, and staff has already been coordinating that. So staff's available to answer any questions with regard to the youth involvement with bringing forward these different policy considerations or any of the new regulations in Pleasanton. Thank you.
Okay. We'll start maybe with the city council. Do you have questions or comments?
We know it well. I actually do have a question. Um, on SB 793. Yes. We, the piece of our ordinance that I wasn't completely satisfied with is that while we are allowing grandfathering, we are, the grandfathering is passes with the sale of properties. So we can have retail, we can have sales within 1,000 feet of public schools. Does SB 793 allow the grandfathering? And are there any restrictions to the grandfathering on SB 793?
SB 793, that state law doesn't address zoning issues as that provision, that 1,000-foot buffer of our new regulation does. SB 793 is focused on prohibiting the flavored tobacco products with the state's exemptions, as well as the flavored tobacco enhancers, though really just regulating what products can be sold, not where those stores are located.
All right, thank you. That's it.
Anybody else, city council?
Steve?
Yes.
Yeah, I just would like to make a note that we also had an appeal process involved in this ordinance. And when we codified it as a city council, we removed the appeal process, which could have allowed some of these businesses to get caught selling to our youth and then have this appeal where maybe it didn't have the teeth. What we decided to do is with the retail license, if you are in violation, the penalties are very severe, very strict, and there's no appeal. So I think that really puts teeth into the tobacco retail license. And I think that was just a good move by our council.
Any other comments? Carla, Kathy?
No, thank you. We had many meetings on this. There was a lot of work to get to this, and I feel very comfortable about the results.
I would agree with Carla.
The school board, any comments? I have one to start with. Is that tobacco retailer permit, is that a yearly renewable, or is that, once they get it, they have it for life?
It is subject to a yearly renewal, and it will be subject to a minimum of two inspections a year.
Good, minimum.
Correct. There'll probably be undercover inspections that we won't let them know about, as we do now.
Anybody else on the board? Trustee Miller?
Yeah, just, first thing, I just want to express my appreciation to everyone involved in this and really appreciate the fact that we decided to use the Youth Commission on this. And not only did, of course, it produce a great result, but boy, what a great learning experience for them. And to see something that they put their, you know, passion and soul into come to fruition, got to be really, really beneficial. My other question is, so thank you. My only question is really around the possibility of referendums or things like that that might be brought against Pleasanton to change this. What do we think about that?
The period, the 30-day period for a referendum has passed. So while Livermore faced a referendum initially for their electronic cigarette prohibition, Pleasanton hasn't received any referendum with regard to this matter. So it is moving forward.
Is that it, Trustee Miller? Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Larson?
I just echo Mark's comments. You know, it's, it's one thing for kids to get involved on a local level, but they were also working with concerned member, concerned citizens across the state of California who've been working on the tobacco issue, as well as other public health, county public health folks around the state. And so they, the students really got a chance to, to not only do the investigative work about the current situation within Pleasanton, but also work with other people that have had more experience and they were really able to learn through, how to work through this process to a successful conclusion. And, and as, you know, the council knows, the school board passed a resolution in support of this pretty early on. And, and we're just really grateful for the process that the city took with the Youth Commission to bring this to fruition. I think it's going to keep a lot of people from starting smoking. And that is something that will, that will help them the rest of their lives. So really grateful, thank you very much.
Trustee Arkin?
Yes, I have a question. First of all, thank you for the presentation. And I think it's great. I think the Youth Commission involvement as well has been wonderful, and it's been a great process. I did have a question. Of the 45 business retailers in Pleasanton that we have that sell these, sell tobacco products, how many of them are within 1,000 feet of a school?
It looks like about six are within 1,000 feet of schools, and a larger number are within 1,000 feet of parks.
Okay. Okay. And as I understand it, and I think Councilmember Testa asked it, a new business can be grandfathered in if it's a sale of an existing one that is within 1,000 feet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. And then just one other last question. I know there's been a lot of public feedback all positive on this from many different people. Has there been any feedback from the businesses in particular? And can you share a little of that?
Certainly. We've been working with the business retail community since June, having meetings just with the retailers and have invited them to attend all of the other commission, committee, and council meetings. And they, as expected, many of them wanted to be able to continue to sell flavored tobacco products. Many of them wanted to be able to continue to sell the electronic smoking devices. Many of them did discuss the exemptions from flavored tobacco, much like the state had or the city of Livermore was considering. But one of the things that they were, I don't want to say grateful, but I think they found the compromise to allow the businesses that are within the 1,000-foot buffer to continue to operate did address some of their concerns with regard to their, the value of their business, even if the business can no longer sell many of the products that they currently sell.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Thank you. Great job.
Trustee Yi?
Let's see, am I muted? No. Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So in the city ordinance, is it, what does it say about if, I know we're prohibiting the sale, but what if, you know, somebody underage has an electronic smoking device? I know that for us in the school district, you know, they're not allowed to have any tobacco products on campus. But what do we do, what's happening like in and around the city?
The city used, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. One question.
So the city used to have an ordinance that said if an underage person had tobacco product or tobacco device in public, that it could be confiscated from them. And as part of this process, there was also a discussion about referring those people to counseling. And as part of the overall policy discussion, we heard from many people that said that they felt that criminalizing or punishing the young people wasn't the appropriate. criminalizing or punishing the young people wasn't the appropriate approach, that it really should be the focus on the retailers, not the underage people who are subject to the advertisement. So as part of the process, we decided not to proceed with requiring any counseling for underage people found in possession, as well as rescinding the provision of the old code that required that it be confiscated.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. So we know realistically that if kids or, you know, anybody wants an electronic smoking device, they're going to be able to get one, right? There's lots of places that, that are still selling them. So an electronic smoking device is an e-waste product. And so I'm just wondering, you know, let's just say, you know, all these people decide they're going to give up their e-cigarettes because of this ordinance. Did anybody along the way discuss any sort of outreach or information to let our community know the proper way to dispose of an electronic smoking device?
That issue hadn't been raised, but we can certainly contact Alameda County Stop Wastes to find out and provide that information.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea because I would really hate for all these things to show up in our creek or wherever. And I do know that because there's nicotine in the smoking device, you know, there's different parts, it actually has to go to different places, right? So yeah, it's a little bit complicated, but I definitely think it would be a good idea to understand the, you know, how to recycle or dispose of an electronic smoking device. And we should really let people know. Thanks.
Okay, at this time, we have public comments. I believe we have one card. Becky?
Yes, Zarina Kivazibu.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. That's a great presentation. Students did well. And thank you for letting us know about the ordinance and voting on it. But prior to shelter in place, vaping was a huge problem at Namado Valley High School. To the extent that school administration would lock a bathroom, students were forced to go across the campus to use, utilize another bathroom and end up getting tardy. I'm not a store owner nor am I interested in vaping products. Having said that, what will prevent students from ordering tobacco online outside the area? Or most of these students also drive, at least the high school students, and they go outside and bring it back. Local purchase is just one way of acquiring a tobacco. If PSCU do want to solve this issue, they have to come up with reeducating the students to use of, the bad use of tobacco. Also, students want to fit in and feel like they are part of a community. If they're not part of the AP community, the nerd community, then perhaps they're cool. They'll be accepted in the cool student community. So I would like to suggest and recommend to the school board to look deeper and find ways to make students comfortable and feel part of that community and give them a sense of belonging. Six years ago, we moved into Pleasanton for four years. That's my kid's first, second, third and fourth grade. Then my second child, he was not invited to a single birthday party. White students hang out with white kids, Indians with Indians, Asians with Asians. We are a community, but students lack having a sense of belonging in this community. Students might feel isolated, might be feeling isolated, and they are acting out to belong. In this way, cool students and smoking, I think. Thank you for your time.
Any more comments or discussion by? I'm sorry?
Oh, I said there was no more speaker part.
Okay, how about the council or the board, any more comments or discussion before we move? Okay, hearing none, we go to number five, facilities.
Hang on, just one thing. So at some point, the school district should give a report out on what we're doing around tobacco education because I think there's something that's going to be kicked in. And I guess that's not part of this presentation, but I think would be great for the council to know what our plans are.
I did have one question and it was actually, I'm not sure. I think I saw Chief Swing on, when we're talking about dare students and the interaction, especially fifth graders, I wondered if vaping and discouraging vaping products is a part of that program?
Councilor Brown, if I heard your question correctly, you're asking if vaping and discouragement is a part of the dare program?
Correct, that's correct.
Yes, yes, it is.
Is that both fifth grade, eighth grade, or is that just eighth grade? Trying to get a history of discouraging and health issues associated with vaping products?
I don't, I don't have the specific detail on the curriculum, but substance abuse in general, better life decisions, risk avoidance is a critical part of the curriculum. But I don't have the, at what specific age range, fifth grade or eighth grade, likely both.
That would be wise. Okay, great. Thank you.
If I recall, it was in both. Certainly more sophisticated than eighth grade and fifth grade, but still, still discussable. Any more discussion or comments?
I, I'm actually, yes, I would like to ask because trustee brought up a good point. During the testimony, we heard an awful lot of students that were genuinely distressed about not being able to use the restrooms. And our generation had a similar experience with cigarettes. The bathrooms were no man's land. You couldn't go in unless it was to smoke a cigarette. So I would really love to get a report at some point on what is being done when students return to campus. Because we heard that there were options of different technology that were going to be put into the restrooms, but we didn't hear anything that really sounded like it was a solution had been found to make bathrooms usable again. So hopefully this ordinance and these restrictions will make a difference. And with the state legislation, even though certainly students, young people will be able to find ways of purchasing online, but it's not going to be that easy throughout California with the statewide ban, ban. And so hopefully it'll make a difference. But I would really be interested in hearing when our students return back to campus, what's being done to make their bathrooms usable again.
So noted. Any other discussion, comment, questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to number five, facilities and construction update, measure I-1. Dave, is Ahmed going to do this or you?
I'll introduce it and I'll hand it over to Ahmed if that's okay.
Okay.
We are very, very grateful for all of the things that the community has supported in our facilities projects. And we know that the measure I-1 was an important step. And this year with bringing on Ahmed Sheikh Al Salami, who's our assistant superintendent of business services and a new team in the facilities and construction departments, those projects have taken off like a wild horse. And we're really, really pleased with the progress that they've made. And I'm pleased to have them present some of those efforts to you tonight. Ahmad?
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Board President, council members, board members and staff. Happy to share with you some good news. As David indicated, last year, you know, we really started to move on things. And the first couple of years, this bond was passed back in November 2016. And during that period, the district took a time to plan and to do design work. And that is the usual process that we go through in these bond programs. But now we're in a state where we are executing the projects simultaneously. And we are moving forward with our planning and design work on other projects as well. Last year, we were able to hire a construction management team led by Eric Van Pelt, the Van Pelt Construction Services. And we also hired a new director, executive director of facilities and construction. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John Traustick, who will go through the presentation. John?
Thank you, Ahmad. Good evening and Mayor Thorne, city council, city staff, President Maher, board members and Superintendent Dr. Haglund, cabinet and community. It's a long list tonight. Tonight, I'm going to talk about all the projects that we're working on, not every single one. But the fact is, there's bond projects and there's maintenance projects. And there's also some other funding that, that get thrown into this. We'll go over a little bit of the program budget, the schedule for the overall program for at least one year out, and then completed, ongoing and planned projects, and then some future planning at the end. So next slide. This one I know is a bit hard to read, but this is our bond program in a nutshell. And basically, it's a $270 million bond program. However, there's been some funds that are augmenting it, such as some developer fees, about $5 million, and also some interest and some COP savings. And if we do get any state funding, we'll add that to it as well. But we've applied for it. We just haven't seen the receipt of it quite yet. So, so of that augmented amount, it's about 282 million. So that is helping us out and should we get any additional money, we will fund it as we can. So next slide. Here is just kind of a snapshot of where we are as of September 11th. We have two issuance of the bond, which add up to 160 million. And then there's some interest earned, then there's some expenses. And then the total expenses currently are about 44 million. And so the remaining balance of this amount of these series is about 120 million. So we are accelerating the speed that we're producing the projects now that we have our bond team up and running. And so what, what has happened over this last summer, we had a lot of projects go on, but now into the fall and into the spring, we've got even more. And then into the next summer, we're even going to have more. So we're really on an accelerating trend and we're trying to get as much accomplished as we can, especially during these COVID times when we have the opportunity to have limited use of the school sites by staff and such. So, so we're trying to look on the positive side. Here's a snapshot of one year out, basically in our bond program. Right there is today. And so this is every two months. Each project is a different color, different phases. And so we're, we're definitely in the midst of doing things, but we're also about to start some other things as well. Lydixon, we're already proceeding on. We've got a lot of HVAC roofing projects that we're finishing up on in the summer. We're planning another five for next summer. And then we're looking at security, fire alarms, cameras and such at all of our campuses. And then we have the network upgrades, the heart middle school, new buildings and new drop-off area, which you'll see some graphics in a little bit. And we're real excited. We're out to bid on two projects, which is actually one project we grouped it in. We're trying to capitalize on the economy of scale of the market now and have a little over of a $20 million project in construction. And that's at Amador and Foothill for the new classroom buildings, for the portable replacements. Next slide. Some completed projects, few of the photos here, fencing. We've got five sites that we've done work on. We've got another three rolling out. We have two in construction currently. One at Pleasanton Middle School, another at Hurst. And the contractor is not quite there at Hurst yet, but we're getting there. We got some HVAC that were finished up at Alice Allen Amador. The solar project at the high school at Amador is actually up and running and producing power. So we're really happy about that. Next slide. Ongoing projects, well, Lydixon was our first big project that started some time ago and now we're still continuing. They, what, they've got the new buildings, the two new buildings, the slabs are poured, the, the structures are going up, they're wrapping the envelope around the outside. The, it's actually quite, quite neat as it's going up. If you have the opportunity to go by and see it. We also have network upgrades and this is all district-wide. And so we will be rolling out a few of the school sites completed in the near month and a half timeframe. But we still, there's three phases to this and I'll go into that a little more detail. Painting, we have three projects, which I'll show you a little more detail in the photos that we have. Fencing, HVAC and roofing. Harvest Park Library is actually occupied now. So there's a photo in here that's actually on the cover, but that's exciting. It's actually usable now. We also are working on fixing, at least in the short term, the HVAC problems at Harvest Park Gym. And so that, we're looking at the controls and the upgrades on some of the valves and some cleaning. And that is supposed to be done if, within the next, shoot, at the beginning of the month, next month. So that's, that's going to be really cool as well. Next slide. Here's a few more photos of Lydixon. This was about a week and a half, two weeks ago. They actually have wrapped the building much more. So, so they're, they're moving quite fast on the new buildings. Network upgrades, mentioned that there are three phases, basically. There's the infrastructure, which is the fiber to the sites is already completed. And then we have phase two, which we're rolling out to our other school campuses. Some are complete, some are not yet. And then phase three is the final, where we get the clock speakers, phones, copper switching, things like that, where everything's operational. And that's nearing on a few of the sites. Let's see, Moore had a, had a issue and so we're accelerating it in the process. So next slide. Here's actually Amador. And you may have seen this, streetscape-wise, the, the, the administration, the theater and, you know, the other wings there, you can, you can see, not all photos are showing it. But through our process, we hired a color consultant. And the upper left drawing is what we were going off of. That's actually just a rendering of what it would look like using the colors. And so, so that's an example of what we are near complete on. And so that's, that's a nice change. So next slide. This is PMS painting project, similar that we have the color consultant on here. There's a lot of existing materials on this school, which is the blockwork and such. So we didn't change that, but we cleaned it and then resealed it. And so this is really a coating issue. I mean, we're really preserving the buildings the best we can by doing, really covering the beams. The beams were really deteriorated with the coatings. We also changed the colors a little bit. We tried to liven it up in terms of the underside of the walkways, the, the fencing and things like that. And did a little bit of colors in the greens. And so, and there is a fencing project there too, which is ongoing right now. Next project. This is the Vintage Hills Elementary. This got a different color scheme, but still had the kind of the similar field coating of the paint. But again, we had the, the colorist on this one. These are some images of the different plays of colors. And we introduced a little purple in small areas on the handrails and such. So next slide. Plan projects, many of which are ongoing right now in the planning phases. We have the two, the Foothill and Amador two-story science and portable replacement classrooms. They're out to bid and we'll be bidding on the 29th. So we're really hoping we got a good showing of contractors, over 20 generals. And so this was really a good sign. We'll see what the prices come in at, but we're hoping for the best. Heart New Science Classroom Building, that's in the design phase. You'll see a drawing of it in a little bit. And the phase one parking is what we're increasing the parking in the back area of the site. And we're also extending a new drop-off to help mitigate any of the traffic concerns in the area. We've also been in communication with the Hacienda Business HOA, James Paxton. And so he's seen the plans. He, and we're doing more of an outreach to the local businesses to show them what's going on and we'll take their input as well. E-10 New Old Military School, I'll go into that a little more with some photos or images on that. We have an HVAC air quality study and improvements due to the COVID-19. The study for the elementary schools will be complete by the end of this week. We've already increased indoor air quality. We've opened up the dampers up to 50%. And now we're going to be, we've got quotes coming in on replacing the filters too. We're trying to get MRF-13s in there. Security fire alarm projects upgrades, we're in the process of selecting a vendor. We did do a pilot of the camera installation at Amador High. And we're still, I mean, every, the people that are viewing it within the office are trying to see the differences between the different vendors. And so we will be making a selection in the weeks to come. Classroom audio and video upgrades, we are doing a pilot program. Classroom audio and video upgrades. We are doing a pilot program in in our burn all room at the district office building, which. We are getting input from our from our staff, our teachers, our our principals, and so that's going on as well. Amador Landscaping, there's a little effort that's between the city and the district, between the theater and the administration building. It was kind of roughed up with a contractor with the solar. And we're working with the city in coming up with a planting design, and currently it's with the city and they're reviewing it. To see what kind of landscaping would be long lasting and not too expensive and wouldn't get trampled. There is a field repair and reconditioning, first wave of projects going through. They're out to bid currently. At six sites and that is coming in to bid, the bids are coming in on the twenty second of this month. And the next slide. Here's Foothill, a few images. We've been working with the city regarding the drop off and the traffic. Issues in the city or in that whole area. There's currently two. Parking light or park parking lights here. And so it's it's a project that came out of D S A. It's bidding and it's got three different things. It's got the. The fencing, it's got the drop off, and we're working with the city on this one. So next slide. In the same bid is the Amador High School. They're very similar projects. And but we don't have the parking issue as much as we do at Foothill. So the next slide. Heart, here's one of the earlier, the site plan over here. The yellow is the new building. It's basically a U-shaped building. And you can see the building image below it, which is the courtyard area. That's what faces the existing buildings. And so it's going to be modular, but it's going to be a permanent modular, and we're working with manufacturers. To come up with the overall design and such. The back area where it's dark gray is the new drop off. And there's going to be a new exit. It's going to be one way exiting onto Hacienda. And then there's additional parking. We actually have a net ad of parking spaces. And I believe it's four. So that is, it's a positive, but the drop off, I think, is going to be a real good positive. We also have some fundraising going on with various community members that we're looking at synthetic track and field. And so we'll see how we can try to really work with everybody and get that synthetic track and field in. So next slide. Here's E ten, and the image that we have is for the fourth and fifth grade elementary school for five hundred students. And we are still in design on it, but before we submit to D S A, the building department for us. The Board of Trustees has asked us to consider alternative options on this. And we'll be coming back to the board in the the eighth of October. For a, you know, reevaluation of the project. So next slide. And then some future planning. We still need to work with the city on the East Pleasanton Development or how that's, you know, impacting our school sites and such. The Burnall First Street intersection and then the Neil property. That's pretty distant project out there. We don't have any current plans for that. So this should be, oh, one more slide, actually. And then we're trying to improve our communications. We have an Instagram account. We've been, we have a full overhaul of the website on our facility side. Going to be rolled out real soon. We've been updating it periodically, but we've got a lot going on there. We're doing email blasts for active construction at the neighborhood sites like Lightixon, and when we do have activities. I mean, we're getting the community involved and knowledgeable of what's going on. So that's all I've got for now. And if there's any questions, or I can try to answer them.
Hey, questions from the city council?
Well, I.
Kathy?
Thank you. I was interested in the field repair and reconditioning projects. I'm assuming that that is not, I guess I'm wondering, is that with bond money or maintenance money?
It's maintenance money.
How are, how are you going to maintain it then? I mean, I think it's great. They need several of them, you know, they just, there's no grass there and they need it. But I wonder how we're going to maintain them going forward once you fix them.
John, I'll I'll chime in on that one. That that's a great question, Vice Mayor. And so we are looking at that. On this Thursday, we'll be providing the board with a full report. In that analysis that we've done, we've looked at our staffing, at our grounds. And we do recognize that that we do need additional support. In our maintenance of our fields as well, so that once they are brought to the standard. And those discussions were also, you know, have opened up some initial discussions with the city. To see if there would be collaboration in terms of field maintenance with the city. As we know. The city is an excellent job in maintaining their field. So we are looking at a couple of different avenues. To ensure once they're brought and reconditioned that we can maintain them.
Good. So you are talking to our staff?
Yes, we have, we've we've started initial conversations, yes.
Yeah, because, I mean, I, our staff, I think, does a really good job considering the use, you know, that they get. Which is similar to the school fields.
Yeah, I would probably say not a good job. They do an excellent job.
Well, I, yes, you're right. Thank you for correcting me.
The parks and they all look beautiful. So if we could get. There with our fields, that we would be very happy. Okay, anybody else on the city council like to comment?
Yeah, I would, I would if I could. I'm sure what's the best way to put your hands up. I don't know if you can see all of us, but. I am, first of all, I I if this is a question portion, then I'll try to stick to questions, but I have to say. You have an incredible load of projects and it's extremely impressive. And our school district is going to tremendously benefit from all of these. But we have heard questions from residents and Kathy sort of touched on mine, so I'll try to word it differently. The fencing around some of the schools that are being added, it means that fields are not accessible to residents. And I've had quite a few neighbors and friends say, how come we can't go play on the fields? It's in the summer, I understand during the school district period, having the. Fields fenced for security and safety of the students, but when it's not school time. Is there any consideration to opening up those play fields for? People want to kick the ball around or even to use, for example, the track at Pleasanton Middle School. It used to be pretty busy. I'd see people out there running pretty regularly, but now that that area is fenced or is in process of being fenced. Residents want to use those as well. So what are your thoughts?
I can take that, Ahmad, if you like, or?
Sure. No, I'll take that. So those are all great questions and issues that you raised and. Some some of it has to do with the covid, especially around our high schools, you know, during this time, similarly to the city. We've we've taken a proactive approach and trying to be a little bit careful at the high schools tracks that we know that usually they are pretty much open during a summer. Because we got conditioning going on in a variety of camps. However, we do recognize that with some of the. Security measures that have been taken around the fencing around our campuses, we've limited access to our fields to public. Pickup games and just, you know, parents and kids playing and not the organized sports. And so we're, we are in the process of reevaluating that and seeing how we can maintain. Some degree of public access while we maintain the security on our campuses from vandalism and such. So. That has been brought to the new team's attention. And it's something that we are actively working on, including with John, who has helped. In the design of the P M S of fencing to ensure the public access remains to to that track and field.
Terrific. There are quite a few pests in some of these fields. When Kathy said maintenance, I wasn't sure if she was referring to. Just the lack of water, fertilizer, weed sprays and so forth. But in some of the schools, like I happen to live near Fairlands Elementary. And the the area behind the fencing or within the school district fencing. Is riddled with moles, voles, gophers and the whole works. And it doesn't seem to be getting any better. And this happened pre covid. This isn't just covid. We can't blame it on covid. But the the lack of the ability to maybe tromp along the grass and have the animals scatter. But they're also multiplying in amazing numbers and they're flowing into the neighboring community, the neighbor homeowners. And it's it's getting quite frustrating for for some of people that live in that area. So is there an active step to eradicate these destructive pests?
Yeah, yes. And that the answer to that is yes. We have, again, evaluated our schools with our new director of operations. Who also took the helm early in in February. And we are going to take an aggressive approach to bringing the, you know, basically that population under control. So we are looking at contracting that out with our pest control. To take a much more aggressive approach and hopefully bring those populations under control. Our first. Order of business will be to work on the fields and on the campuses. That we are improving the field. So before we can even begin the fields, we need to pretty much reduce the population. And then we're going to fill the holes in the field so that and that so then that field's going to be properly repaired. And then the next set is going to go to the other campuses. Will be the will be the next approach in terms of controlling the rodents and then finishing up the reconditioning of the fields.
Great, thank you. Two two last questions. When I'll stick on fields first, is there's a discussion and I wonder if anybody can verify if it's. If it may come to fruition or if it's in discussion about a cricket field on one of the middle school fields potentially Harvest Park? Is that being discussed at the staff level? When you talk about all these upgrades, I don't know if it's a part of it.
Yes. So Councilmember Brown, I would invite you to our Thursday board meeting. And we'll go into that in depth, but the that the presentation that is in our board packet. Does include a discussion on cricket field options. And one of the options is a discussion at Harvest Park, but we have looked at other school sites as well. In addition, there are members of the community who are actively working with the school district. And I know have reached out to the city as well to look at expanding synthetic fields. To Pleasanton Middle School and also to Hart Middle School. And so if those projects were to move forward, we would look at trying to. You know, fold into the design of those fields at Cricket Field as well.
Got it. Okay, good to know, because you're right. Some some of these cricket players are pretty, they they like to knock on doors and call people, so as they should. And last question is, you're doing quite a bit of H V A C upgrades. You refer to it as being covid. Because of covid and to make more covid safe in the school districts. Have to ask, is there any grants or funding you're getting from the state to assist? Or is this all on the Pleasanton School District to cover the costs? That's it. Thank you.
Okay, so great question. So the so some of the current planning that happened pre covid. Is being done by the measure I want, basically, funding. In addition to that, if we do. Get our modernization dollars that the that if the state has a future bond, we'd actually capture some of that for those projects. In addition, after covid, the state recently passed, I'm not sure, John, which S B it is, but they did pass. A new. State funding specifically related for schools and improvements to H V A C. The details of that program are yet to be determined, but is a two billion dollar program. And our team will will we're active, we would by doing all of this work ahead of time, we're going to be, you know, first in line. I don't know if, John, you wanted to add anything on that one.
No, you're right, Ahmad. It's it's a program that the the details of it are not defined yet at the state level. But it is supposed to be two billion dollars and we are working with our funding consultants to. Help us with that process. And so we will see as the news develops.
John, you said two billion. That's statewide, though, isn't it?
Yes, it is. It's not for just us.
Darn, we could really have some quality here. Okay, thank you. And thank you, Ahmad. I appreciate it. Thanks, John.
Yeah, Carl, I'd like to make a comment about that. So just just for the voters. So the HVAC and roofing projects were always on the bond list, all the way back. To when we put it on the on the ballot. But the additional. Safety measures and filtration and all of the things that have come to light throughout the pandemic. It is an additional layer to this, to this project that wasn't originally intend, you know, planned. So. The HVAC and ripping work was always in the plan, but we are now trying to improve on that with the filtration.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anybody else? Comments, questions?
Yes, I have some comments and questions. So first, it's really very exciting to see that a lot is being done now. That there are so many projects that are going to benefit the community and that our bond dollars are are going to be realized. Soon to in the benefit of the residents and students. I want to echo the concerns this time last year or at this meeting last year, I questioned. The fencing and expressed my concern about not locking our community members out of. Their facilities, because of course, the school district facilities do belong to our taxpayers. And so I'm really glad to hear that that's being considered. Because my family certainly always enjoyed popping over to our local elementary school and doing pickup. Basketball or soccer or. And I I would hate to lose that. And we can certainly see more and more of the school. Fields and courts are no longer accessible. So it's good to hear that we're. We're thinking about that and we'll do what we can to continue to give access to the taxpayers who own those facilities. I wanted to ask also about the state funding. I wasn't sure, I heard a mention of. That we're in line for state reimbursement. I kind of wanted to get an idea of. What the expectation, what the timeline, how much we think that we are going to be eligible for. That's that state eight billion dollar bond, right? Is there? There was a lot of concern about whether that would. There would be anything left for a community like Pleasanton. So it'd be really great to know. That we are expecting it if we are. And then my last question will be, I'll ask in advance is. Lightixon, I've driven by it several times. It is exciting to see it happening. And I'm wondering, right now, there was. It seemed a little fluid at one time. What the enrollment that it's being built to? Is it being built beyond what the current district policy is for elementary enrollment? Or I believe last I heard that there was. Infrastructure that was going to be put in place to allow for expansion if needed at a future time. So where does that stand?
So John and Eric, I'll take that second question. And then if you guys can prep for the the first question on the state funding and where those dollars are. So in terms of likes and the current plans, maintain the capacity at its current level. However, there is the option for a third, basically, building pod. And all of the infrastructure are prepped. So if the district does decide to expand it. It would be done efficiently in a space and and the planning has already gone to where that building would be located.
And and real quick, though, what is that number? That's seven hundred, right?
It's it's.
The current.
The the current, I believe it's around seven twenty in that ballpark. I have to look at my documents to get the exact. Enrollment and capacity of that school, but it's in that ballpark.
All right, thank you.
Okay, from a funding perspective, the overall eligibility that the district has is in the sixty million range. However, you have to apply for each of the projects. That we're going forward with. Currently, we have three projects. It's it's Amador, Lightixon and Foothill. That are that we're pursuing funding on. And as others go forward, such as Heart. And all of the H V A C projects will be funding, will be applying for those as well. The state funding currently is is almost, it's. The state funding currently is, is almost, it's nil. There is some available, but it's really, really low. So the state does not fund you easily at this point. We just submit our applications in hopes for a future school bond.
John, you may want to give a brief update on the CTE grant and that, that we do expect some funding for, it's a foothill for that program.
That is true. There's another funding source of, the state has multiple funding sources. One of which is the career technical ed or the CTE program. We've submitted two projects in two different pathways. We did not get the eligible, we did not get this good enough score on three of the four pathways. But we did get a good enough score on foothills. One of the, one of the pathways. So we're looking at receiving $3 million from the state on that. So that's very good news. In fact, the SAB or the State Allocation Board will be publishing their agenda tomorrow. And we will be hearing from our funding consultant as to where do we stand? When do we think we're going to be getting something? But the last I heard was sometime after taking steps that we could receive the money in summer of next year.
Now, John, do we have to match that?
That, well, in effect, we are, but we already have the project moving forward. Therefore, the match will be available. I mean, we will be fulfilling the obligation.
That's very good to hear. And, and Steve, that was going to be my question because I do remember the last CTE grants that I played a role in. And we ended up not being able to use all of the money because at the end didn't have that, that match. So some of it went back. So that's good to hear. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Steve?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Actually, my questions have been asked and answered, but I did have one and it follows in this funding. Recently had a bond measure that failed by that much. And the needs that were expressed in that bond measure were to follow this bond for many more of the needs across the district. Is, is the school district considering bringing that bond measure back? Because you still have, again, just half again as much to do. What's the future of that?
I'm going to defer that to our superintendent, David.
I didn't come off of mute, but thank you. So I think there's a, there's interest within the community, at least within the community that's been communicating with me to revisit the issue, but with a greater level of specificity. And so I, I think that if, as we develop these programs and we, we can get to that targeted list that the community can come around, it will be a good time for us to look at, at bringing that back. When exactly? I'm not quite sure yet, Jerry.
Thanks. That's, that's all I had.
Any other questions or concerns, discussion? Okay. And there was no community comments on this?
There is no speakers for this item.
Okay. Next move to item number six, city planning update. And Nelson?
Just a really high level. Every, every year when we convene, we, we talk about development activity in the city of Pleasanton. And we put this on the joint agenda for the benefit of the public who's tuning in, really to give a sense of the coordination that exists between the district and the city regarding near term development activity so that you can do your proper planning for school accommodations and impacts. But we also layer that with a sense of things to come. And so we have some updates to share with you in regards to state obligations and how and dates that will, will impact generally the city of Pleasanton and, and the school district. So to give the presentation, we have Ellen Clark, our Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Nelson, for the introduction. Good evening, Mayor, Council, President Mayor, and members of the board. Just give me a second. I can bring up my presentation. Hopefully you can all see that. Oh, no, one more step. Is that up now?
Yes.
Thank you. So as Nelson mentioned, the purpose of this item is to just give you a snapshot of current development activity in the city, in the city, as well as a little bit of a look ahead to some of the major planning projects that we see coming down the pipeline. We communicate status of development projects, active applications, projects under review through a bi-monthly update that's posted to our community development department website. It includes both an interactive map as well as a related PDF file. Each of those projects listed really gives you a snapshot of status of a project. And so you can see, see some examples here. That update also covers a broader range of, of projects, including some transportation projects, major transportation projects that are happening, as well as some of our long range planning and policy development efforts. So that's posted on our website and is kept, is kept up to date. Our next update, I believe, is due in, in October. So just delving into some of that information that's in, in that report, reflected in that report. We have a total of about 162 units that are under construction and nearing completion. They include homes at the Ponderosa Valley Trails Project, single family development at Irving Ranch, you've probably seen, under construction over the past several months. A project that we're particularly proud of and happy to be seeing, seeing near completion is the Sunflower Hill Affordable Housing Project, which will provide 31 affordable housing units. Leasing on that is beginning this month, we understand, and will be fully leased in the next, in the next few months. And then finally, a small project, the Austin Meadowlock Project, which is off of Foothill Boulevard. Projects that are approved and for which construction is pending include, include the Lund Ranch Project, a project that was long in the planning process, but finally looking to break down, break ground in the next few months, having secured their, their rating permits and other building permit approvals. So in terms of what's in the, in the pipeline, perhaps a smaller roster than in prior years. It includes this Paterno Ranch Project down in the Happy Valley area, a project for 22 single family units. That's actually an amended application. Previously, it had been a little bit of a bigger project, that 39 units. The Lester Hidden Canyon Project off of Double Canyon Road is a 31 detached, a single family home project. And then perhaps the most, the largest scale project is the new housing development that's, that's been planned out at Stone Ridge Mall. It's one of the sites that was identified in our housing element. And is slated as proposed for up to 486 apartment units that would be integrated into, into a future commercial expansion of the mall. So just to touch on where we, where we stand this year with, with building permit activity, a total of 127 permits have been issued this year for residential projects. They include projects within some of those, those units within some of those projects that I just mentioned, including Irving Ranch and Sunflower Hill. And we're also seeing a fair number of infill units develop, including a number within the downtown and really an increased interest in accessory dwelling units, which are the small secondary granny, granny flats or granny units built in conjunction with single family homes. The state recently passed legislation that relaxed some of the permitting processes for ADUs and reduced fees. And so we're seeing an uptick in interest in, in construction of those ADU units with a dozen or so permitted this year. So to give you a sense of some of the trends that we're seeing, this summarizes the, the total number of permits that we, we've issued this year and the number of residential units in that number. So in total, a total of 1,737 permits issued this year. However, a very relatively small number of those are new residential homes. Just 31. What you can see in this, in this table is the effect of COVID, particularly in the spring, on our building permit activity. We were really offering very limited permit issuing services with a shelter in place ordinance, and that's reflected in, in that, in that middle band of numbers there and the relatively small number of permits issued in the April, May, and June period. Looking a bit more globally in terms of trends, what you really see here is that we had, as you know, a very large number of units come online in the middle of the, the last decade, 2015, 2016, with a, with a total of 1,200 units permitted in that period. That number has been fluctuating around 100 to 125 units over the last three years. This year, we've seen a real slowdown. It's difficult to know at this point whether that's sort of uncertainty that's coming with COVID or just projects that were entitled and teed up prior to that, sort of having now, now constructed and built those units. But that's, that's just to give you a sense of the trends. So what's ahead? The crystal ball, I will say, is probably a little bit murky in terms of, of, of development activity. And, and we're hearing that in general, just, just in terms of the overall economy. However, despite COVID, it appears that the housing market remains relatively strong in terms of resale. And we're continuing to hear developer interest and continuing to proceed with entitlements on projects in, in the city. So that points to, to a recovery and ongoing interest in, 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 in development within the city of Pleasanton. It's still a desirable market. So just to touch and conclude on a, a couple of future planning efforts, as Nelson mentioned, a really significant project that we'll be undertaking over the next couple of years is the update to our, to our housing element. The state requires that we update that document every, that, that component of our general plan every eight years. And that update comes with a new allocation of new targets for housing that the city must plan for during the, during the next housing element planning period, which will run from 2023 to 2030. That number, the, the state has already delivered the, the regional number. That's the, the total aggregate of units for the nine county Bay Area. And it reflects about a 2.3 fold increase over the prior cycle. And as the, the process is moving forward to allocate and determine how those units should be, should be distributed to local jurisdictions, the, the, the current trend appears to be that the city will see a relatively similar proportionate increase in our total arena allocation upwards of 4,500 new residential units that we would be asked to plan for. The city is actively engaged in that arena discussion. It's ongoing with discussions at the, at the A-BAG Executive Board level. So that we make sure that the allocation that we, that we get is in fact reflective of our fair share of that regional housing need and, and proportionate to the, to the, to the need in the city. However, it is likely to be a large number. The city will be engaging in that process starting in early 2021. An important piece of that will be the planning that may come around the East Pleasanton area. As, as was mentioned in an earlier presentation, the city council gave us direction earlier this year to proceed with that planning effort. That's, that's been on pause during COVID. But one aspect that the council communicated very clearly to, to staff was that they expected a clean slate approach to that. So there really is no preconceived idea of what, what will, what, what the ultimate plan for East Pleasanton will be. So we're expecting a very engaged process with, for East Pleasanton, one that involves the community and one that involves PUSD as we think about and plan for the, the development. That's, that's the right, and that makes sense for East Pleasanton. So that's just to highlight a couple of things that are coming down the, the pipe. Similarly, with the housing element, conversation with, 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 with PUSD as it, as it relates to planning for schools and schools capacity will be extremely important. However, the, the city is mandated to do that planning to show that we have the zoning in place that can accommodate our, our regional fair share. So that's an item on which we have, we have no choice, but we do have choices about where the housing will go in the city. And so are proposing a process that will be very thoughtful about, about that planning and distribution to minimize community impacts to the extent possible. So that concludes my, my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Do we have any questions, comments, discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
Yeah. So on the east side Pleasanton, so when is the earliest you think we would see shovels in the ground in that? And then what is the city's thinking in terms of getting developer assistance in funding a new school in that area?
Um, in terms of timing, Nelson, if you want to start there?
I'll, I'll let you take a stab and then
Okay.
I don't know what you say, I might.
So in, in terms of timing, we expect the planning process to take about, about two years. After the specific plan is complete, there will be additional steps that would be needed, assuming that there's development that's happening out there to, to annex that property, develop detailed plans for subdivision or, or, or future development plans for whatever profile of development is determined out there. All of that will take, will take time. So my projection is it's a five, six plus year before really development actually starts. So Nelson, feel, feel free to add to that.
Yeah, I, I've been, I've been criticized over the years by saying that anything that we undertake of this size and nature takes at least 10 years from start to, to maybe initial construction. It, it could accelerate, but it highly depends on, I think, a couple of things. One is the public process that Ellen referenced and, and where we end up in terms of vision and demonstrated need and, and, and support from the community. And then, and then I think the other variable is whether or not the housing element plays a role in the, in the future development of East Pleasanton. And it's quite possible that as a community, we decide that's not how we're going to meet our need. We're going to meet it in a different way, in different locations of the community. So those are, those are complex questions that, that require a lot of thought and deliberation on the part of the community and the council and planning commission. And we'll, we'll start that process here when we have a better sense of when we can start it safely in maybe a better COVID environment where we're not necessarily relying on virtual meetings like this, but you know, having some physical interaction with the community so that we really do proper planning.
Thanks. And but what do we think the likelihood is a developer would be able to fund an entire school or part of a school or anything like that? Any sense of that?
Well, it depends on who you ask. And my, my sense of that, trying to be objective is land will need to be dedicated if, if we end up planning East Pleasanton. Dedication comes at a price. It's tied to density or zoning. And so we have to be, you know, mindful of what we're doing from a planning perspective so that folks really understand that it's, it's not necessarily free land. It, it comes, it comes with a transaction that we're providing the developer through zoning approval. And then, and then on top of that, maybe some capital monies that get contributed by the developer. But again, that's influenced by density and and then I, my sense is we're going to need some kind of grant funding or loan from the state to bring it across the finish line. And that all depends on the amount of amenities that are extracted from the developer of choice. So you know, if we want a lot of open space or a lot of parks or a lot of capital improvements to support the school district or the city, again, that, that comes, that comes at a price that's not free. And, and, and zoning is the And 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 zoning is the is the transaction, for lack of a better description. I think that's the best way I can answer your question, Mark.
I have a question.
Okay.
It's my understanding that some of the East Pleasanton land is owned by the county. So if that's true, how is how does this work? Does the the is the developer trying to get the land from the county or explain that a bit?
I can take a stab at that, Ellen, or would you like to?
Sure, you go you go ahead, Nelson. I'll I'll add it.
All right. So you know, in in general numbers for the benefit of everybody who hasn't heard this before, it's about in round numbers, a thousand acres that East Pleasanton comprises and some of that property is inside the city limits of Pleasanton, but owned by private entities like Kiwet Corporation, those kinds of things. And and PGS Pleasanton Garbage Service, for example. There are portions of that property that are are owned by private entities, but they are outside the city limits, but in unincorporated Alameda County. And and that's where the bulk of the interested entitlement process is focused on. Then the remaining property is owned by Alameda County Zone Seven Water Agency. And and that is primarily the areas that act as a watershed and detention for runoff in the valley. Those are commonly known as Lakes I, H, Cope. They're all owned or in the process of being owned by by Zone Seven. Those would remain under their control and used for the utility that they're envisioned for. So the 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 open issue for the city is what to do with the land that's inside the city limits of Pleasanton? And what to do with the land that's outside the city limits? And whether or not we should annex that and specific planet for some suitable agreeable use on the half of the community.
I had the same same question that Jamie had, actually. People say this out in the public and I was going to ask about the risk of the process leaving Pleasanton's control and being driven at the county level. Is that a real risk that that we need to be concerned about?
I I think so. We've we've done this with the county before and they you know, the the developer, or at least the representative of the property owner at the time, tried to spearhead a residential project through the county permitting process and the lines intersect quite a bit in East Pleasanton in terms of jurisdiction and they focused on this area specifically that was outside the city limits. But but inside the urban growth boundary, which technically made the property eligible for county entitlement. The challenges with that is you can't bring infrastructure into the area without being very creative and without a very sizable investment in capital. We're the water supplier. We're the sewer provider. We provide public safety and you provide schools. So the hurdle to overcome that is is pretty high. Is it possible? Sure, but but pretty remote. This area will be planned by Pleasanton. It's just a matter of you know, at what pace we would like to develop it at and 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 can we articulate a vision that we can embrace and support going forward?
So Nelson, out of the thousand acres, how much of it is in the unincorporated and how much of it is in the city limits?
And now now you're getting really granular on me. And Ellen, do you know?
You know, I can't remember off the top of my head, but
Yeah.
I mean, it's like eighty, twenty, fifty, fifty, sixty, forty.
I I would I would say I would say it's more of a it's a more of a sixty, forty. Sixty, forty comprised of land that could be suitable for some kind of development. Or open space project and forty percent of it is owned and operated by or in the process of being owned by Zone Seven. Those are really round numbers, but that kind of gives you a visual image of the area sixty, forty.
And is the unincorporated part in which supervisory district is it in?
It is in Supervisor Miley's district.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions?
I had another question before we move on. Can can you describe what happens to the dollars that are collected from developers in lieu of building affordable housing? What does the city do with that, those dollars?
So I I think you're in referencing the affordable housing fee that we charge on all new development, commercial, office, industrial, and then per unit for residential. When we when we collect those funds, it goes into a restricted affordable housing fund. Where it sits in it and it's used for the purposes of advancing new affordable housing or subsidizing existing inventory. So some examples of how we've used that fund in the past. The construction of Cottonjar Gardens relied on approximately thirteen million dollars that we had collected over time to help subsidize that 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 effort. And that paid for essentially approximately a hundred and eighty new affordable units that are at the thirty percent very low and low range for senior living. And then most recently, we drew from the pot to help support and fund Sunflower Hill. Our contribution, I think, was about two million dollars. Those are the two recent examples of how those funds have been used.
So we've supported seniors and you know, some of our most vulnerable young adults with Sunflower Hill. What are our? I mean, I just feel that we're in a place where we really actually need additional affordable housing actually built, not just zoned for and or planned for. And I'm just wondering, you know, I I granted, I know you guys talk about this kind of stuff all the time. We don't usually talk about it at the school board level. So if you could maybe address that a little bit, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, so I I think don't don't audit this number because the the number moves around occasionally and it's hard to keep track of it, but we have we have north of about ten million dollars currently in reserve that we've collected over time in the Affordable Housing Fund. And John, I think your point about how to leverage it more effectively going forward is is really sort of a a central point, I think, that the city needs to be focused on it as we prepare a new housing element. And and with all the new laws that are really mandating and incentivizing and to some degree penalizing cities for lack of performance. Where those where those dollars, I think, can be leveraged most is by increasing the affordability in projects as they come forward. So rather than just accommodating the fifteen or twenty percent affordability that our ordinance requires buying up the affordability to something like twenty five percent or thirty through a subsidy out of that general fund. Theoretically, that's a great concept, but you exhaust the fund quickly over a couple of projects. And so that doesn't doesn't necessarily buy you hundreds of units in affordability. But it does make a dent and it does make an impact in terms of the requirements that the state has of cities like Pleasanton. So that's that's where I would imagine having a constructive conversation with the council, the Housing Commission and the Planning Commission on how to utilize those funds going forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes, Steve, I have. I have a few. Okay, first one, I think we'll wear off them. Regarding the projects that are considered a near completion, approved and pending review. I imagine those are all in our current or upcoming demographic reporter update. Is that correct?
That that is correct. Our demographer who updated the report last year, I believe it was around February. They contact the planning department and pull all the information and and utilize that information. So as we update the plan for this year, they'll do the same thing.
Okay, and tho- those in those categories will be in consideration and and to the demographic report, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Another question I have for the city on the resident project, and that one is listed as pending review. When is that one, if there's any idea on when that one would come to fruition?
Do you repeat which which project you're asking about?
The Stone Ridge Mall residential project and kind of the reason I'll preface my question with the reason I'm asking is that, you know, that isn't an area that would heavily impact our most heavily impacted elementary school. So that's why I'm kind of timeline, basically.
So what we understand from that developer is it's on the Simon Properties is the owner of that of that that project. Their their situation is 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 difficult right now with with COVID. And they've essentially paused all of their all of their their major planning projects across across the country. They're really in a wait and see mode as as far as when and if pro- planning will resume for that site, but they've indicated that they still have interest. Pleasanton is a good is a good market and they recognize the need to bring different sorts of development into that area. So I don't have a I don't have a date for you, but it could it could restart. You know, anytime in the next in the next few months. But just as maybe to your point about about school impacts, as I as I mentioned, it is one of our housing element sites so that so that so that project was envisioned as part of our last housing element update and part of the EIR that went that went with that and that looked at things like the school impacts and you know, so so that it's not it's not a new project on the books. It's something that's been sort of on the horizon for for a while for that particular location.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ellen. The other question I had is with the east side. There has been concern about safety issues with schools, well, schools and residents near a quarry. And as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, the quarry has the right to work there, I think, another twenty years or something like that. So has there been any consideration on the safety aspect of residents and schools being over in that area?
We certainly heard the comments that were made when the item was in front of the council and they came up in the last round of planning for East Pleasanton. And certainly it'll be an issue that gets looked at in the process. I think it's a little early to say exactly how, but but yes, of course, public safety will be a a significant concern and we want to make sure that any development that's planned out there can 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 be safe for the for the residents and students of the future school.
Okay, thank you. And last question, and this wasn't in your presentation tonight, but it was in the back of the board packet. Regarding like traffic update, so I don't know who could on traffic update, and I didn't see this and forgive me if I missed it somewhere. But on traffic update, circulation, that sort of thing. One area that seems to be very impacted in our town is the area at Owens and Johnson, and I work right near there, so I experience it all the time. But the backup of cars near Chick-fil-A in and out of that area, has that just real quick, has that been under consideration for modifying in some way?
Yes, we we've been in active discussion with with Chick-fil-A about addressing the queuing issues. And in fact, if I were not at this meeting, I would be at the Planning Commission meeting where our traffic engineer is providing an update to to the commission on on Chick-fil-A and other and other projects. So if you have interest, there there is a report that's being delivered tonight on that. But in short, yes, the city has been taking those those complaints very seriously, has been working very actively with Chick-fil-A to reroute traffic through the through the shopping center so it doesn't spill out onto the onto the public street. They're in a really unusual situation and having nothing but drive up orders of a tremendous volume right now because all of their Eden services is not allowed under COVID. But but they've been, you know, quite responsive, but of course, we'll continue to monitor and and address it as it as it goes forward.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. That that's all the questions I have.
Any more additional questions, concerns?
Yes, I did. Jerry, you can go first if you want to. Okay. Great, you know, very thorough presentation as always, Ellen. Some little some little things I didn't hear, however, that I think perhaps the school board trustees and public might be interested in is the last time we did our housing element in the search on behalf of staff and the committee members, task force members, was to scatter new zoned projects for meeting our regional housing needs across the city. So one part of the community wasn't fully responsible for carrying what looks to be in the area of four thousand new homes. So we were talking about the east side, but as you can see, in the last time we did this, zoning changes, the Stone Ridge Mall was an option. We have Kaiser in that region, which is also zoned. We have BART. We have approximately eleven hundred units that we're hopefully able to carry over according to staff. So four thousand becomes something closer to twenty eight hundred. And then we're going to be asking the planning commission and the city council to be working together and checking in back and forth to find sites that are scattered throughout town. So it's not all going to be in the east side. And we're looking for infill projects. We're looking for potentially, there's some large parking lots that may be in good locations as well as potentially even at the Stone Ridge Mall. And the reason I think that's really important when you're looking at the position from a school board trustee is you wouldn't want, I assume, one region to get all these new middle school students, even if to Mark's point, you get an elementary school, where are you going to send them from middle school and high school? So the scattering throughout town and evening out the new impacts of this new development that may be coming forward, I think, is really important from a city planning standpoint, but also for Pleasanton Unified School District to take into consideration. So the sites haven't been selected yet and it will take a while for that to happen. But we definitely want feedback from you. We want to hear from you. We want to hear individually from you. Call into these meetings, participate, and please, I know staff does a good job of interchanging between the two organizations, but this is critical because it dramatically affects your ability to educate in the future. So that's my point. Thanks.
Jerry, you had a comment or?
Yeah, I was actually going to follow up on the Rena question. It's a we will, we have preliminary numbers and usually those preliminary numbers stay pretty true to what they are. So we already know what are very low, our low income or moderate above moderate are looking like. And then of course, as we go through the process, which will be a two year process. And if we're successful in 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 doing this specific plan with the east side at the same time, what does the school district do during this time? We'll know with the Rena numbers if we know what the 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 levels are. I'll just, I'll take a a block number and say there's twenty seven hundred units of low and very low. Do your demographers look at those numbers and then do you work back with the city as we're looking at sites and what type of housing production is zoned for those sites?
I can take that question and and the answer is yes. So in this last go around, we discussed with our demographer to start to take in consideration the East Pleasanton project as currently conceived by the developer in the early stages so that we could start doing some early preparation work and also engagement with the developer because we you know, school districts can enter into agreements with developers to extract additional benefits for for the community. you know, school districts can enter into agreements with developers to extract additional benefits for, for the community in terms of, in terms of that. So that's where we're at is very initial stages, consideration of the impacts of the, of, of that project into the demographic study and to layer that in. So we're in that early stages and tracking the development of the, of your work and the work that's required.
Yeah, but to follow that up, if you don't have an application from a developer that has, is specific to the type of housing production and it's just the city working through sites and working through how they are, they are zoning those sites, is that where you need to come in with the city? And, and advise or at least have some, some collaboration?
Yeah, I mean, and, and that's the best way it works is that working together and that collaborative and, and looking at the planning and the zoning and seeing, you know, where, where is the impact areas for our school district in terms of these schools, certain schools are more impacted than others in terms of the cycle that they're in. And so that engagement and those discussions would be very helpful and beneficial for the entire community.
So, so I think it's really important then, as the city council moves forward over the, the year and a half, two-year planning with the housing element and the possible planning of the east side, that there's a, there's a check-in. I know there's liaison, but there's truly a check-in between PUSD Board of Trustees and the city council to, to evaluate the, the direction that the housing element's going so that when we talk about fairly citing these around town to be fair to the entire city. I think we also have to take another level and say fairly site for where the school district is going to be able to take students. Wouldn't that be correct?
Yes.
So I would hope, I would hope that'd be the direction that both of these organizations would take as we move forward on the housing element. Thank you. Those are my.
Just for a second, Ahmad, I, I just want to say that Nelson and his team have been extremely collaborative with us in the process. And we've had multiple conversations about the impact of housing development and schools, including conversations. You know, with the kind of giving us some education, looking at the, at the plan that was developed before, because we weren't here at that time. And helping us understand a little bit about what the city sees moving forward. And, and they've been very curious about, you know, where the, where we see the opportunity for growth at the school sites and where we see impaction or growth and cause trouble. So I would say Nelson and the, and the team have been very willing to have those conversations and it's much appreciated.
Okay.
Can I follow on a comment? So Carla, I appreciate and Jerry, your comment about the concern for the school district and wanting to not overly impact a particular middle school, for example, with a big development. And, and I'm not on the planning commission nor on the city council, but I would just say that people need to, this, this is a very complicated math problem. As Nelson mentioned, these, the, the amenities and the mitigations are not free. And so if you fill all, if you do all of the Rena obligation with infill, there's no incentive for a developer to provide a lot of extra amenities or supplemental mitigation agreements with the school district. When there, it's a small project and they're, and they're not, and/or they have a large affordability component as well. I mean, that's also part of this. So there has to be enough dollars and at the end of the day in the project for them to be able to offer the additional mitigation to the school district. So yes, on the one hand, that sounds great that we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't be overburdening any one area without having to do any boundary changes. That sounds wonderful. But also in terms of dollars generated that helps us offset the additional, you know, students coming to our school district. A lot of times that's where you see those types of mitigation is when you have a larger development, you say you have a, a big tract that's being built by a single developer who can make those concessions to the school district, for example. So again, I really appreciate the, you know, the concern and I love the collaboration between the city and the, and the school district, but that's another component, another way to look at it in that sort of, you know, you kind of have to do this a lot. So.
And I think it's also important that we recognize that this period of time, even though there's a seven-year cycle on arena, the period of time, once the sites are zoned and, and in the housing element is certified, you may have applications come forward and they're not built for the next eight, 10, 12 years. And we've had that in the past. And then just, you know, just bringing in the bad news is we will also have during this time, additional legislative bills, housing production bills that may change our, both of our ability for local control over these project sites. So it's, you know, keeping everything in the big picture. This is, is how the collaboration between the two agencies need to work.
And, and thank you. I'd like to comment, Joan. Thank you.
I ask a question. Do you mind? I haven't had a turn yet.
I'm just going to respond to Joan and it's all yours, I promise, since we're kind of following this. So when you pick a site that's kind of remote, let's say like East Pleasanton, as the city manager mentioned, there's a lot of infrastructure. That area has no roads. It has no water lines. It has a lot of infrastructure, potentially even an underpass for the railroad track. So I see your point that infill sounds great, but also on the edge of town carries a lot of infrastructure expenses too. So each one needs to be considered independently. And that's my point. Thank you, Kathy. I apologize for stepping on your.
That's okay. I wanted to follow up on, actually your earlier comments and Jerry's and I just wondering, if you look at this arena from the 10,000 foot level where, you know, let's say that we're going to get 4,500 units, you know, hopefully we'll have 1,100 carryover or so. And then do we look at, you know, we've got a net balance of 3,500 or so. And you know, the breakdown roughly between, you know, the multifamily and the single family. So from an overall district standpoint, is there enough capacity to house those students? Before you even talk about, you know, specific locations and, you know, some of the schools obviously are already overcrowded.
Yeah, simple answer Kathy is no, that there's not enough capacity right now to handle all of those students without new facilities.
So, you know, I think that's a really important piece for us to know, you know, the best guess if, if these things were built, you know, roughly in the grand scheme, you know, what kind of capacity would need to be added? Forget about the location, but just, you know, an absolute numbers initially.
Kathy, especially when you think, you look at high school because they come from many areas. And so you look at Amador was 2,400, Foothill was approximately what 2,100 or so. What would three, 400 high school students in the city do to those high school?
Right. I, I, you know, I just would hope that, that, you know, as we begin to, you know, we have a rough idea of how many units we're going to have and the different levels of affordability that we would look at this from the overall city in terms of, or the overall district in terms of the needs. So that it can help us in knowing what we need to get from different projects from a, you know, to help you plan, help us address this and meet the needs of the, the district. I mean, we know we want our school district to continue to be, you know, really excellent and perceived as being excellent. And so, you know, we need to be able to house the kids appropriately.
I think it's all the more important to, to collaborate together appropriately and when it's appropriate about this type issue because it's going to affect both.
Right. That's it for me.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes, please. So I, did I miss in our, the facilities, the status of the Donlin expansion? Did we cover that and where that is? But before that, what I wanted to say is while I agree completely, Joan, I, I really believe that the need is in more affordability, more affordable housing. That is where we overproduced on market rate by 200, 230% from our Rena requirements for our last cycle. And we, as every other city in the state severely underproduced on affordability. But, and, and I think that we need to, as I think Nelson pointed out, instead of just working toward that 10 or 20% that we can get in inclusionary, which by the way is better than most cities do, but it's not enough. But the problem is that the affordable projects do not bring significant mitigations either. They're not going to bring the ability to build more schools. They're not going to, in fact, some of them. Once it reaches a certain level of affordability, bring very little and the state legislation that's coming forward is trying to remove mitigation fees and almost entirely. So we definitely have a conflict there. And so what, what is currently existing? I mean, for years I've been concerned that all of our campuses were over capacity. What is the status with the Donlin expansion and what capacity does currently exist? And again, be careful what you ask for because as much as I believe and want us to concentrate on affordability in our upcoming housing cycle, it's going to make it a lot harder to get some of the mitigations that are needed to bring with it. So can I hear about the Donlin expansion?
Sure, sure. Just give you an update. So the Donlin expansion, the project is on nearing completion in terms of design work and is ready to be submitted to the Division of State Architecture. During the spring, summer, our board requested a review of that decision in light of, you know, changes in our financial situation in terms of operational costs. And we have been actually seeing a, a flattening and a slowdown of enrollment. And that has to do with a variety of issues other than, you know, new, new construction. There, there's other things going on within the community that, that the demographic generation of students in some of the areas has not been what our demographer projected. So given a few of these various issues, the board is asked us to look at this options again. And so at the October eighth school board meeting, we'll be bringing back a report to the board on some of our work on that, on that request.
So are you suggesting, as I've heard in the community, that that project may not happen? Or is there still a firm commitment to going forward? I had on the, I guess that maybe is on the next item that there's been for this year, a significant reduction, 350 students or something across the district and but obviously that's COVID related. Obviously, families are looking for alternatives. Some, I mean, it's still a small throughout the district, but are looking for alternatives to what is current, currently available within the district. And, and I don't think there should be any concern that after COVID, that the numbers will bounce back. But is that what you're talking about when you're talking about that the demographers predictions haven't materialized? Is it just that?
Some, some of the trends were there prior to, prior to COVID, and I think that for this current year is accelerated.
Well, it would be reasonable to expect that it would accelerate for this year. So my question was, where, what is the status of the Donlin expansion? Is it, is there still a firm commitment? Or are you suggesting on the eighth that that's what's going to be discussed, whether there is any commitment there or not?
So the, the board has made no decision or their, their direction to staff was to proceed with design and prior to submitting to Division of State Architecture for review of the plans that, that we bring back to them and analysis of that. And that's what's happening in October. So at this time, staff is still proceeding as if the project is moving forward, while at the same time is providing this analysis for them.
Okay, so when we look at and hear the concern of our trustees and our superintendent that there is not currently space capacity within the district, we are still and, and with an understanding that we are receiving tremendous pressure from the state to prepare for larger numbers, we're actually questioning whether or not that expansion is going to happen. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. So the, the, again, you know, this is kind of opening another topic, but there is definitely a need for a space, we, you know, in the Donlin area. That area is over capacity in terms of students and students in that area are overflowed. How the district proceeds on addressing that capacity is the question. The question is, do we build a single expanding the Donlin with an E10, providing a, a large number of capacity at that one location? Or do we increase capacity in a different manner in the school district? And that's, that's the discussion we're going to engage with. It's not a, it's not a matter of not adding capacity. It's about how we add the capacity to the school district.
Okay. And so just for clarification, the bond specifically said new school, but that is what is being questioned right now.
That is what the board has asked us to review.
The commitment to the community to build a new school, the money in that bond. All right. Thank you for clarifying that. I'm done.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay, very none. We'll move to number seven, beginning of the school year update.
Hang on, I'm, I'm getting messages from some community members saying that the Zoom link doesn't work. So they're not able to make public comment. So I don't know what's up with the Zoom link.
Um, the public have until 6:30 to submit a speaker card. So I do have speaker card for item seven and item eight A.
Okay. I mean, they're, they're not able to get on the Zoom. They're watching from YouTube. So I, I don't know.
Should we proceed or?
Unless Alan is on the line.
I am on the line. The feed to YouTube is the exact feed from Zoom. The only value of getting it on the Zoom feed is if you are going to speak, this is how we would do it. I would also add in the agenda, there's actually three, if not four options to get into the Zoom. We find that sometimes people don't click on the link right or the link doesn't work correctly. But we sort of mitigate that with, with the exact steps to take to get on the Zoom, whether it's by the web, your smartphone, or simply calling in.
So moving to number seven, beginning of the school year update. And do we have some comment cards on this?
We have one speaker card on the site.
Okay, we'll take the report, questions, comments, and then we'll do the speaker card. Dr. Haglund?
Thank you, President Amar. So we are going to do an overview of the, our opening for the school year. We are starting in the middle of week seven as we speak. Next slide, please. So everybody is engaged. Students and staff are reconnected. They're adjusting well to new protocols. I would, I would venture to say that remote learning is, has been a, it's been a challenge for everybody. And yet that's the, the cards we were dealt by the governor. And so teachers have been working incredibly hard to get their, their classes online and to help students understand how it all works. Parents as well have been spending a, a large amount of hours supporting their students at, at home to make sure that they're getting access and having the best experience possible. We are continuing to monitor, monitor the Alameda County Public Health Department guidance, including new guidance today. We're reflecting, adjusting and doing our best to communicate as we go. But I do want to make sure that, that, that the council members and community members understand that on July 14th, during the summer, the Board of Trustees for Pleasanton Unified School District did approve a reopening plan. And as the county does relax measures, we will go back to that plan that the board has already approved and work from, from there. And I know that Dr. Woodward is going to talk about that a little bit tonight. But I'm going to start off by handing it over to Mr. Hernandez, our HR Assistant Superintendent. But I'm going to start off by handing it over to Mr. Hernandez, our HR Assistant Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Haglund. Good evening, Mayor Thorn, city council members, President Maher, Board of Trustees. I thank you for the opportunity for me to share what the Human Resources Division of our school district is engaged in as reopen school. On the first slide, we, we track our employees and our vacancies. And if you could see the, the chart from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen up to now, it's been pretty steady. But in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, there was an increase in vacancies. And in large part, we offered a retirement incentive for our teachers that year. And also that was the year where we went from part-time elementary vice principals to full-time. Elementary vice principals, and that kind of explains the anomaly there. In twenty twenty-one, we are tracking our teachers on our staff. Obviously, there has been an impact in COVID nineteen. We have had staff who have separated from the school district and retirement in other circumstances, and we are keeping track of that. Due to COVID. There's been multiple programs, university programs. Students who were engaged in their credentialing program who were not able to finish for a variety of reasons. Primarily for testing or completing a course. The state has allowed school districts to fall waivers for those individuals. It doesn't excuse them from the requirement, but does give them more time to be able to complete those requirements primarily again, a testing. And those waivers do need to be presented to the board in a public meeting, and the board needs to vote for those waivers. Next slide. We are still encouraging substitutes. We have a different process because of COVID nineteen. We are asking people who are willing to be our substitutes to follow, sign in, file a waiver. That allows them to physically go to our school sites and primarily so that. Those substitutes get trained on the new teaching and learning remotely, as well as the new nuances to attendance taking. Once they are proficient in that, they don't longer need to report physically to the sites, but will be allowed to work remotely. But that's going to take some time in order for that to, to be achieved. We also are still encouraging our community to volunteer at our schools. There are three levels. We have a day-to-day volunteer who could go to a school site and submit their ID or their driver's license into what we call our Raptor system. Which checks for sex offender compliance. And if there's nothing there, they're issued a, a pass to be able to participate and volunteer at our school sites using that system. Our level two is those who are working with our students in clubs or, or coaching. For our camps, we really do appreciate our Pleasanton Police Department who have really been collaborative with us and, and supporting us. Last year for level two, our police department allowed us to. Screen volunteers. There was four thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven volunteers that were screened by police department. So, so thank you for your continued support for that. Our level three are volunteers or overnighting trips. And of course, right now, due to COVID, we are not doing that. But again, those, you know, eventually when we do reopen, obviously we will have that process. We engaged in that. All of our volunteers as well as our substitutes or anybody, including our employees. Who enter our campuses have to go through the health screener, the COVID nineteen, so that's attached there. Next slide. There has been a change in federal law allowing for leaves. So we are providing our employees certificated, that's our teachers primarily, and our classified staff. The ability to calculate their leave because it, it is a complicated issue. And our government has granted eighty hours of emergency pay leave as well as extended FMLA leave. And i- it's a complicated issue. We do have a great coordinator, Nancy Bronzini, who is supporting our staff. And we provided these calculators for them so that they are able to calculate their leaves as they may need it. Next slide. I now like to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent of Business, Ahmad Shigal Salambi.
Great, thank you. And so we've really pivoted our school district to really support remote learning. Our technology department has deployed over five thousand Chromebooks to any family that has needed a Chromebook, as well as hotspots. Both for our families who need a hotspot to access the internet as well as our staff as well. And so we've also done a lot of backend work, reconfiguring our student information system for attendance and engagement tracking. And also really preparing with teaching and learning. Access to our digital content through our different software applications that the students are using. Including Zoom and other integrations that were necessary for that. So that's been keeping our technology department very busy and active these past few months. In terms of our operations, we currently are in remote learning, but our team is cleaning the schools. In, in compliance with guidance for Alameda County and the California Department of Education. And so we are cleaning daily. We're cleaning touchpoints. We are disinfecting. And we do have many staff that do utilize our classrooms for teaching, and so we want to make sure that they are safe. We have also put plans together for cleaning during the hybrid mode. To ensure that classrooms are always disinfected between any cohort changes. And that could be an A and PM schedule or, or a two-one-two. And so we will make sure that the classrooms and all common spaces have access to soaps and hand sanitizers. As well as using, providing disinfectants for classrooms to utilize as well during the day. We've also been engaged in procuring PPE items and to ensure that we have an adequate supply for when school does return. We have accepted a, a, a large number of PPE from the state. The state has provided us cloth masks for all staff members and students when they do return. As well as disposable face masks as well. And so we've also purchased other PPE to ensure that we have an adequate supply for the reopening of school. Both in soaps, hand sanitizers, gloves, thermometers. And so there's, there's been a great deal of work done in that, and we are ready for when school is to open. Our child nutrition people have done an exceptional, exceptional job over the past few months. As soon as we went to COVID, we received waivers to be able to provide free meals to all students. In the community and that program continued all the way through August. At which time we then went back to our traditional program. And, and then at the end of August, the state again authorized the use of the waiver program. So at seven sites currently, we do have meal pickup for all students in the community ages zero to eighteen. So that is available and can be found at our website. I'm not going to cover the construction stuff because that we have already done in depth. So at this point, I'm going to turn over to Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Woodward.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Thorn, City Council Members, PUSD President Maher, School Board Trustees, Superintendent Haglund Cabinet, and the Pleasanton Community. The Teaching and Learning Division would like to highlight some specific information regarding how remote learning is going this year for our students. Our division work is guided by our overarching instructional priorities. Which include providing quality remote instruction for all students. Implementing instructional interventions for struggling students. And strengthening teacher and administrator capacity by providing ongoing support and professional development. As Dr. Haglund previously mentioned, we are currently in the process of planning to bring back our highest need students in small group supervision cohorts. In order to provide additional support with remote learning. We hope to be able to do so as soon as it is safe. Also bring back our transitional kindergarten through second grade students first, who are our emerging leaders. In addition to bringing students with disabilities preschool through twelfth grade. And this would be when the health guidance tells us it's safe to begin to open up our school campuses to partial return to students. Next slide, please. So how is remote learning this year different than remote learning in the spring? Well, this year we have implemented consistent expectations that provide our students and families and teachers with systems and structures. These include consistent and daily instructional schedules for all of our schools. Strengthen communication about assignments as posted on Google Classroom and CSO. Daily required minute, daily minute requirements that include both synchronous, that means live and interactive instruction. And asynchronous instruction, which is includes independent learning activities. As well, we are taking daily and period attendance and using digital tools for assessment and progress monitoring. For example, students are submitting work, taking assessments, and will be receiving grades this year. In addition, we have onboarded over fifty various digital tools that help our students access digital curriculum. Next slide, please. Here are a few comments that we gathered during our most recent crowdsourcing platform called Thought Exchange. That pertain to our learning continuity plan, which is required by the state. These comments note that students are enjoying the Zooms. That they are adapting to their daily instructional schedules. And that parents appreciate the special support for students with special needs. So I will now pass this to Dr. Vandecamp, who's our Director of Assessment and Accountability, to provide us with a quick update. On some of our assessments that help us during COVID to measure student progress.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share information with you tonight. This slide represents an overview of our district-wide assessments. The initial English learner proficiency assessment in California or LPAC. Is required by the California Department of Education for all new potential English learners. We have been conducting these assessments since the end of July in person, co-located outdoors at Village High School. While following all health and safety requirements. The California Department of Education just recently provided protocols for remote testing. To ensure testing security, and we will continue to work to screen all of our new potential English learners. All other assessments have been conducted and are in the process of being conducted remotely. After training our administrators and teachers in remote testing protocols. Senate Bill ninety-eight requires us to collect measurable data that can be used within our learning continuity plan. To identify student growth and success of our distance and in-person learning plans. And now I'd like to turn it over to our Coordinator of Innovation and Distance Learning, Mr. Junior Yee.
Thank you, Dr. Vandecamp, and I'm grateful to be able to share some of these updates in regards to the digital tools that we're using. So online curriculum access is available to more than fifty different courses through our clever digital platform. And clever is a, a tool that's used to house different digital applications. To create a centralized location for students and staff to access their different digital tools. Zern, Edgenuity, and CSO are some of our most widely used digital applications and are accessed by hundreds of teachers and thousands of students each day. Clever does provide the data to us so we can track usage. Intervention support via small group Zoom meetings and additional tools. Such as learning A through Z, Benchmark Education, PathBlazer, and MyPath are being used to support our high need student groups. This picture down below shows a sample of a teacher page on clever. And you can see the different application tiles that are all housed in one location for easy access for students and staff. Next slide, please. And talking a little bit about Zoom and digital security. So the district has initiated steps to provide authentication settings for all of our users in Zoom. To increase control and security to address Zoom bombing. We're combining these district settings efforts with professional development for teachers regarding Zoom best practices. So Zoom best practices include utilizing the waiting room function, muting users. And tracking overall participation. On the left-hand side, this picture shows an example of a graphic. That will be shared with students to help them access certain Zoom meetings when there are technical difficulties. And we are, we have been presenting. Professional development and different ways and methods to utilize Zoom to our staff. Thank you. And with that, I'll pass it back to Dr. Woodward.
Thank you, Mr. Yee and Dr. Vandecamp. Finally, we are committed to being proactive and informing seniors about what colleges are now requiring. In terms of SAT and ACT testing as pertains to the admissions process. We are very excited that tomorrow night we will be hosting a college admissions in the COVID nineteen era webinar. In which guest speakers from colleges that are popular with our students will be featured. I thank you for your time, and I will now pass to Mr. Diolazo, Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services for additional updates.
Thank you, Dr. Woodward, and good evening, Mayor Thorn, City Council Members, Board President Maher, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Haglund. City Manager Fiallo and Pleasanton Community. That is a long list. So health and safety has definitely been a focus of ours here in the district, just as it is for the city and, and the rest of the world, frankly. And COVID nineteen has been. Our, we've been researching and following the, the guidance and looking at the metrics. And really trying to learn so much about what COVID nineteen has done to our district and what we can do to, to mitigate. And reopen our schools. So we're tracking all that information. We're pouring through a lot of information. And in collaboration with these agencies at the state level and the county level. And also the County Office of Education, there's a lot of information that's coming in that we want to make sure that we, we understand and process and analyze. The city of Pleasanton has just been so helpful and invaluable into our work as a school district. And so I just really want to thank City Manager Nelson and his team for including us in the City EOC, the Emergency Operations Center. So that we can gather that information, process it like I said, and then also use it for, for our plans. COVID nineteen was not enough, and so we're also monitoring the air quality. All of you know, the last couple of days have been really nice. The air quality has improved dramatically. But we are following still the AQI, any fire warnings, and also now extreme heat. There's some hearing that there may be some, some warnings coming up for this weekend. And then the last thing too, so many of our kids, all of our kids are in remote learning and really rely on power. And so we are trying to monitor the PG&E power outages or any public safety power shut offs that may be planned. So these are just the many different things that we are trying to stay ahead of and monitor, like I said, for our community. Next slide. So one of the main local guidance documents that we use is this document called the COVID nineteen school guidance. It's a, it's a put out by both Alameda County Public Health Department and the Alameda County Office of Education. And it's a very useful document. I believe it's public, so anybody can access it. The link is right here on this page. We are now in version ten, and that was last updated on September seventeenth. And there's just a lot of new information every time they update it, and I believe they're updating it. Close to about a week, every, every week or so, we're getting a new update. So in this document, we have the school scenarios for positive cases. That's, that's a very important component of this document. It really lays out very specific protocol. As we think about reopening schools and bringing our students and, and staff back to schools. We have to have a plan of how to address positive cases that may come up. And so this guidance is very, very helpful in having that information written for us and provided for us. There's other documents in there from the state and federal level. There's some new information actually in this version. About childcare programs and how they function and what are the criteria that need to be met for childcare. PPEs and then also there's FAQ. So this is a very important document. I scan it every time it comes out. Again, in preparation for our, our planning. Next slide. So, this is a very important document. I scan it every time it comes out, again, in preparation for our planning. Next slide. Okay, I'm going to end this presentation with some student data. And we want to take a look at our enrollment trends, and this is a summary of the next couple of pages that are coming forth. This is a snapshot of the end of the fourth week of school. There's a typo there. It's actually the September 4th, 2020 date, not September 11th. That would be, that would be the fifth week. So, this is the data for the fourth week of school. So, our elementary enrollment is at 5,953. Our middle school enrollment is 3,420, high school 5,093. And the total district enrollment as of that date, September 4th, is 14,466. So, when we compare those numbers with the 2019-2020 school year at the fourth week of school, there is a decrease of about 390 students. So, you could see the breakdown there at each grade level. The highest number, the biggest number of student decreases at the elementary level. So, you could see negative 234 students this time last year, and the middle school is 123, high school is 33. And then the district enrollment comparison would be that 14,856. So, this is the executive summary, but we can turn the page here, and I'll show you some other data points. So, feel free to look at the different schools, their enrollment comparisons on the first day in comparison to the end of the fourth week. So, the two columns on the left-hand side is where we have some complete numbers for the 2021 school year. Our census day is October 7th. That's when we will load up information to send to the state, and then we will capture the October 7th, which is the first Wednesday of each. We gather information and we upload it to the state. So, on the, on the left-hand side, again, I will go through the elementary subtotals. So, you could see on the first day of school in the 2021 school year, there's 5,928. The subtotal is actually below that, 5,928. That's the total number of students in TK to 5th grade on the first day. At the end of the fourth week, if you move over a little bit, it's 5,953. So, you could see there was actually a gain there of 25 students in comparison to the first day of school. But in comparison to the beginning of the year last year and to where we are this year, in elementary, you could see that there is a decline in students of about 234 students right there. Next page. All right, for secondary enrollment, secondary are our middle schools and our high schools. Again, you could see the details for each one of our middle schools. But if you look right now at the middle school subtotal at the end of the fourth week is 3,420. If you keep going down a little bit for high school totals, the high school subtotal is 5,093. And then the total enrollment for our secondary schools, which is, like I said, is middle school and high schools, is 8,513. So, if you compare that number with the last year's 1920, fourth week, 8,669. There is a decrease of that 390 students that I mentioned earlier in comparison to last year's numbers this time of the year. Okay, and again, you can see the details for yourself with all of our schools and the comparisons for the four-year period. All right, next page. Okay, we wanted to take a snapshot of the demographic information, and this is student groups by race. In the 2019-2020 school year, the pie chart on the left, that is the breakdown of students by race on that first October, that first Wednesday in October of 2019. And that total number of students is 14,856, excuse me. And you could see the breakdown there of the student groups. Our biggest student groups are Asian population, 45.6%, actually on the other side still, 45.6%. And then our next biggest group are white students at 35.27%. And then our Hispanic Latino at 9.9% and so forth. So, in comparison, the 2021 school year, you could see the breakdown, and this is the student number of students in this one is 14,466, and that was our September data. And you could see our Asian student group is the biggest at 49.5%. And then our white students are 34.9%, and our Hispanic Latino is 10% and so forth. Those are the three biggest student groups by race. And so, we do a side-by-side comparison and just compare annually. Okay, I think that's it for my part of the presentation, and I will send it back to Dr. Haglen.
All right, great job, team. Appreciate your input, and we're ready to take any questions that the council or the board may have.
Questions for David?
Yes. Dave, so when I'm looking at this, first of all, just kudos to the, to the school district and your staff, your teachers. This is just overwhelming to me to understand how you even got to this point with everything that's going on. It's just amazing. So, I am, my daughter's 29 now, so I'm not going through this, and I'm really blessed that I'm not. But I have to give you and your students and your parents credit for managing this. But, but as I think about it, we're seeing a job shift of remote work and people doing more completely remote work. But there's discussion, will it come back? When it will come back? What will it look like? And maybe it's permanent. Maybe we'll see a huge shift in the way people do their commutes and work for their companies. Is this something that you're looking at for school as well, is that there might be a continued distance learning? And that maybe that's how you will handle some of the impacts to the schools and have a mix of this, maybe more high-functioning or in distance learning, so on and so forth? Is that part of your discussions?
Well, we certainly are having a lot of conversations, including, you know, what does our provision of services look like in the, in the out years? I don't think anybody, including myself, and I have some substantial history with online learning in a previous life somewhere else in the world. Nobody thinks that remote learning is the best way to teach kids. Well, I, you know, our goal is to get back and to bring students and teachers back together. Yet, at the same time, there's a lot of opportunities for flexibility and creative scheduling that remote learning can provide for families and for students and for teachers. And so, it would be crazy to say that we would not consider looking at those as options. But I just want to make sure that as we, as we try to start stepping back in, that's not necessarily the goal. I developed an online program that was one of the largest in the state. It took me many years to develop that program and get it ready for students. We didn't have that opportunity here. So, what's occurring is not what I would consider, you know, high-quality online learning. It's, our teachers are doing incredible jobs, having been shifted on a dime. But that's, it's not the way a course would be designed if you were able to design it from scratch. And so, you know, the simple answer to the question is, yeah, we're going to keep looking at that, and we definitely should and probably should have a long time ago. But we want to make sure that whatever we provide is equal to, in terms of rigor and quality, to any classroom that a student would walk in onto one of our comprehensive schools. And so, not as a knockoff, not as a way to get out of something, but it's just a separate choice so that it provides opportunities for more students.
Thanks. Appreciate the answer.
Additional questions for Dr. Haglen?
They can ask questions, the other team members, too, Steve. It's okay.
Dr. Haglen, I have a question. As a former parent that volunteered in the classroom when my daughters were in school, it allowed small group discussions. It allowed a more one-on-one of, because luckily, Pleasanton has been blessed with many parents that want to help and to help out with PUSD as well as with their own students' classrooms. Are you using parent volunteers at all with COVID? And is that an option? Obviously, the teacher needs to be the leader and the guide and keep track and be a part of the conversation. But that, that small group option, has that been discussed at all?
So, I'm going to take a stab at it, and then I'm going to let Dr. Woodward jump in if she would like to. I think that there are some limitations that we face that we don't face in a classroom. So, a camera on a computer is looking into somebody's bedroom in somebody's house. And so, it exposes to a completely different level some confidentiality issues if people are just coming on and jumping on in the Zoom sessions. And so, no, not at the same level that you would if they were in a classroom where the teacher does have direct supervision over the volunteers in the room. That's not completely possible in a Zoom environment or Google Classroom environment. Now, having said that, parents are supporting the students and are supporting the teachers in different ways, but just not in, probably not in the, in similar ways than what you would have seen when you were in the classroom as a volunteer.
Okay, I did hear that 4,000 volunteers have been through the Pleasanton Police Departments for clearance. But you're stating that would not give them the type of clearance that would allow them to see somebody on a Zoom call?
So, if I may, that was last school year. We really do appreciate the support of the police department in clearing that number of volunteers. And again, most of that was pre-COVID. We are encouraging our community members to participate and volunteer distributing Chromebooks, distributing materials to our students. So, that primarily is the purpose of our volunteers right now. As we, again, try to engage our community, there is confidentiality issues and other issues that arise in supporting our students early in the classroom. But we are still encouraging our community to participate in our schools.
From Dr. Haglen and Mr. Hernandez, just to add that during material distribution and other school opening, when the school year began, we did have parent volunteers that were extremely helpful. And they're continuing to volunteer in other ways, such as by attending our district committees, our meetings, school site events, in which principals are able to share with them direct ways that they can continue to support the schools.
Okay, I know some people are, they're fully taxed just being able to work from home and have children in the education system, and are the most compassionate for the teachers, obviously, but also these parents that are trying so hard in a confinement of your own home to do so very much. But some parents have more time and some parents have less time, so I'm really glad you're able to use them and to the best of their ability and following the legal guidelines. So, all right, thank you.
And Carla, just to add to that, I think there's a group of parents that have worked collaboratively with the PTA Council, and they've established a support group that's anchored in Facebook, and parents have been supporting one another that way. And so, there's a lot of people that are volunteering. They're just volunteering in different ways to try to make sure that the parents have support at home as well as the teachers at school.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
Additional questions?
I do. Thank you. So, you know, I have heard this presentation somewhat already, and I continue to just be amazed at the detail, dealing with all the different logistical things with the schools, the classrooms, and things that, you know, I'm sure you never thought about. And it, you know, it seems to be working. Is it what we want for our community and our kids? No. But, you know, we're trying, no, everybody's really trying to do the best they can. I guess my one question is, and I've asked this before, but as we, you know, we see pictures of kids on the news sitting outside a fast-food restaurant trying to access the internet that way so they can participate. And I just, you know, I want to make sure, ask the question, are we addressing it so that every child in the district has a Chromebook and has access to internet if they want it and, you know, have that need?
So, Amon, you want to take that one?
Yes. Yes, every child who needs a Chromebook can get access to a Chromebook. There is a shortage, and we have ordered another 3,000 Chromebooks that are to come because some of our families are using their devices at home who have it. But as soon as those devices are there, then we will be able to provide even those families with PUSD devices. We do have access to hotspots, and any family who does not have internet connection can get one and has received a hotspot from the district.
So, that's, I mean, that's really great. And so, if we see kids at one of the fast-food restaurants, I won't name any, they're there by choice, not because they have to, to be able to, you know, to participate in online with their Zoom meetings and so forth.
Kathy, it might be noted, too, that our I-1 funds, the first item we purchased, or one of the first items, were Chromebooks. Unfortunately, when we had to go to remote last year, we had the Chromebooks to distribute. Otherwise, it would have been, it would have been, it would have been tough.
Right. And you, you know, as I recall, I think there was a fair amount of criticism in the community for that at the time. And, you know, in hindsight, it was a very visionary, great decision that allowed a much, you know, quicker move to the remote learning last spring than, than you would have been able to do otherwise.
Exactly.
So, I think you all are to really be complimented on that.
Any additional questions, concerns? Hey.
Go ahead, Julie.
All right, thank you, Jamie. You know, my heart breaks for our students for how much they lose with with the situation. But, and while clearly it's not an ideal situation, the feedback that I've heard is what a fantastic job PUSD has done with a less-than-ideal situation. So, really want to say that I know you guys have done a great job. You've really worked hard to make the best out of something that is far less than ideal. So, thank you for working so hard for our, for our families and our students, of course. That's all.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, too, that, you know, it's not only having the devices available. Actually, we had them already. They were before COVID. I think it was our 612 that already had them. So, getting the rest delivered was a lot of work, but it wasn't, you know, the whole district. But one of the things that people oftentimes don't understand is that, you know, we didn't have the infrastructure for all this remote learning. And not only did we get devices out and everybody did their, switched their teaching and learning, but we also, you know, created a help desk, you know, all this different infrastructure behind the scenes to support the technology also came online super fast. So, Ahmed and his team also did an amazing job getting that going. You know, is it perfect? No. Do we need to do more? Do we need more staff there? Yeah, probably. But we didn't have that before or that need before. So, you know, I think I just don't want people to, you know, to forget about the backend infrastructure part that we didn't have before. So.
Good comment. Okay, any additional? Okay, hearing that, we could go to eight. Budget update? Okay.
Laura Hall?
I'm sorry, yes, we have someone.
Hi.
Yes, go ahead, Laura.
Thank you, board members. As a parent of both middle and elementary students in the school district, I would strongly encourage our school board to apply for the county-provided waiver so our K through 6 grades can open before county guidelines allow it. With no guarantee from the Alameda County Public Health Board to open up schools, even as outlined in the red-tier status, it's imperative to do what we can to open our schools as soon as possible. Remote learning for our students is not ideal, with many struggles and obstacles that prohibit students from truly engaging in the learning process. My middle school student has dealt with many techno, excuse me, technology issues, not being able to submit home. not being able to submit homework or not being able to hear instructions from teachers during Zoom calls. The Zoom calls make it difficult to make connections with teachers and peers. Some teachers are more engaged than others, which makes for unequal learning opportunities. My elementary students yearn for social interaction and being able to learn with their peers in a physical setting. They want to be with their teachers, to see their faces, hear their voices, and learn in a physical setting. If we have a chance for these younger grades to be in a physical classroom, learning with their peers and teachers, then why not take the opportunity and apply for these waivers that are now accepted by our county? Please consider applying and doing what you can to guarantee our students will be able to return to the classroom this school year. Thank you.
Okay, additional questions? Or do we have anybody else in the waiting room?
No, no one put aside on.
Okay, anybody else like to comment? Dave, I have a question. Is it my understanding that waivers are no longer needed?
Waivers are not needed in the red tier, but this always correct that the the county has indicated that there it's not an automatic thing in terms of reopening school. They have additional expectations. They haven't yet communicated. Nelson referred to them earlier tonight. They haven't yet communicated those out. We anticipate that they'll be out in the next 10 days to two weeks. The other issue is that the waiver process, approval process by itself will will take three to five weeks. That's what the county office has said to us. And so it's like six and one half a dozen of the other. And we believe that we can walk forward in the in the red tier just effectively as we could with with a waiver and and probably in a safer way, which is the paramount concern for me.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we'll move to item number eight, budget updates, City of Pleasanton.
We're on the homestretch, so we're going to finances collectively as two agencies. And we're going to start off. And so I have Tina Olson, our finance director here to make the presentation.
Good evening. Pleasure to be here this evening. Is this working?
It's working.
We can hear you.
I'm still struggling with Zoom. So good evening. So I'm going to give you a brief update on the fiscal year 2021 midterm general fund operating budget. For those who don't know, the city of Pleasanton has a two-year budget. And in the second year of the two-year budget, we do a midterm update. And so this is an update that we did back in June. So I'm just going to focus on the general fund budget that funds the majority of the services folks know about, like police and fire and library parks and recreation and operations, whatever, the maintenance activities, streets, facilities, fleet maintenance, of course, community development, planning, engineering, building and economic development. And then the city administration costs, the city managers, city attorney, finance, human resources, city clerk and IT. And we do have a midterm update. We're really focusing usually on revenue estimates and expenditure and expenditure updates. And then this year, we were really looking also at options to balance the budget, given COVID and the revenue loss the city is experiencing. Our main goals, of course, maintain a balanced budget and prudent reserves and to continue to fund the central city services. So this is the big picture overview of the general fund budget. I have over in the far right, the recommended adjustments that we made from the original budget and then the final midterm budget. So we reduced revenues net at 642,000. We increased the transfers out, I'm going to get into that later, by $2.5 million, and we cut expenditures a net of $3 million. Going to the revenues, you see, we didn't cut all of our revenues. We have some increases. Property taxes are continuing to increase based on assessed valuation. We reduce sales tax by almost $1.7 million. Other taxes is hotel tax and business license tax, and that's almost $1.9 million plus the fees that we cut. We cut slightly recreation fees, but I think probably overly optimistic. And then other revenues are $1.8 million increase, other than primarily reimbursements. And I'm going to get into some of those details. So property tax is 1.1 million. The city does continue to have increases in assessed valuation. We did reduce the supplemental taxes, that's the additional taxes the city receives throughout the year based on properties that sell at an additional price than what they were purchased for. That's to be a little bit more conservative, reduced it by 181,000 from budget. But but based on how property taxes were trending, it's about 375,000 from what our projections were in March Q4 of the COVID shutdown. Other revenue increases of $1.8 million, those are reimbursements. We get reimbursements from developers for contractual services, grants reimbursements. We've got a telecommunications company reimbursing our engineering department. There's a corresponding expenditure budget, so that's not available to balance the city's budget. It's just a nice incentive pass through. So the revenue reductions from self-term place, the primary one was sales tax, we reduced it by 1.7 million. And then transit occupancy tax, hotel tax, 1.2 million, recreation fees and business license together is about 300,000. We, when we did the budget, Nelson coined this term cautiously optimistic recovery. We decided, let's be optimistic about the recovery and have a backup plan, which I'm going to get into in a little bit. And then in terms of expenditures, as you can see, we reduced by a net of $3 million. Personnel, 583,000, transportation and training, we cut 310,000, maintenance and repairs, almost 2.1, 2.2 million dollars. And then we had a slight increase in materials and supplies to net and a slight decrease in capital outlay. In terms of personnel costs, we did have wage increases for the police officer association, MOU, management confidential raises from last year and classifications, an increase in the pension of almost a million. And the big cut we did this year is temporary salary. So the 2.3 million dollars is the temporary salaries of essentially seasonal staff, mostly in recreation and library, but they're across the city. We took 1.8 million dollars of that, 2.3 million dollars, and put it into a contingency. So we could, if revenues perform well, reinstate some of those temporary staff. But that brings us to a net decrease of 583,000. Going into non-personnel costs, as you might imagine, we're not expecting a lot of travel and training. So that pretty much eliminates that budget of 251,000 in the city. Repair and maintenance, the negative reduction of 2.1 million dollars. And focusing on R and R, that's a repair and replacement. We allocate usually about $5 million a year to repair and replacement activities in the city. And we decided to cut that by 2.5 million dollars and we moved it into a rainy day fund, which I'm going to cover shortly. It's part of our backup plan. And then we had some increased repair contracts and some increased parts and equipment that bring that to a net of 2.144 million. Materials and supplies went up by 1.4 million, but you see that reimbursable expenses of almost 1.3 million, where there was the offsetting revenue. We had election expenses this November, that's 70,000. Materials and supplies decreased expenses of almost 1.4 million. This is where we took a lot of cuts in addition to the temporary salaries, mostly contractual services, supplies, utilities, not using the facilities as much. Library and recreation on labor expenses with those programs being significantly reduced this year. And it gives a net increase of 28,000. So you can see how the cuts weigh against that reimbursable expense. So transfer, so we transfer money out to other funds. This is where we transfer money primarily out to the capital improvement program, that's the CIP. We reduced the CIP transfer from 5 million to 2.5 million dollars. We took back 2.5 million dollars plus the 2.5 million dollars that we had cut from the repair and replacement allocations and created a $5 million rainy day fund. So here's here's our backup plan. So we really don't know how revenues are going to perform this year. It's it's really, I was telling Nelson earlier, the the only time in my life where I really just have no idea how things are gonna, how are they gonna roll out this year. We do have those cuts in revenues, but some of them I already know aren't going to perform as we estimated. So the $8 million backup plan includes $2 million in efficient savings. The city conservatively budgets salary and benefits, assuming 100% of the positions are filled, but they but they never are, and we always have efficient savings, usually at least $2 million. We have that 1.8 million dollars in the contingency that we moved the recreation temporary salaries to. So if we need it to balance the budget, that's what we're going to use. And then there's the $5 million rainy day fund. I also have the additional backup plan because we need to have multiple plans. We have in general fund reserves, the city's policies to maintain reserves equal to at least 20% of operating expenses. It's currently slightly more than 25%. If we take that difference, it's about 6.3 million dollars the city could use to help balance the budget and still have reserves consistent with city policy. We have a Section 115 pension trust fund. If we used, we can draw on that fund to pay for the city's contribution to CalPERS for employees' pension benefits up to 13 million dollars. So that's the 19.3 million dollar additional backup plan. And then at general fund reserves, we didn't change them in the midterm budget, so they stayed at 30.6 million dollars. And you see that 25.2% equals 25.2% of operating expenses. So we have healthy reserves this year. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
We have questions before we move to the district? Okay, Ahmed, are you going to handle the district?
Mr. Maher, we do have a speaker on item 8A.
Okay, okay.
Don Bauer, this is the last public comment of the evening.
Okay, good.
Okay, so it's unmuted, so hopefully everybody can hear me. I first like to thank everyone for working overtime tonight. We've just passed three hours and I know that two hours was the initial forecasted time for this meeting. The district does not have the financial capability to either purchase school sites or to construct, furnish and operate the needed facilities created by this project. So I am somewhat surprised and and really frustrated by the long detailed discussion regarding the east side as far as, you know, what houses are going to be there, when the houses are going to build, you know, how many houses, what's the school? And I'm going to read this again because it's very important. The school district does not have the financial capability to either purchase school sites or to construct, furnish and operate the needed facilities created by this site. So what I'm reading from is the is the, from the I'm reading from the legal counsel's letter to the planning commission regarding the east side. And what this is telling you is that the school district, even if you gave them the school and furnished it, that they don't have the money to operate the school. And so, you know, we spent close to a half an hour discussing the east side. And the school district is telling you that we don't have the money to operate the school, regardless of how many homes are out there. And quite frankly, I'm even surprised there there's any discussion about putting homes out there when this letter from the 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 P U S D council to the city's planning commission is the latest official comment regarding homes on the east side. And so that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Any comments from the council or school board on A?
Me, just from a, just from a technical standpoint, from a budgetary perspective. We feel pretty confident that we ended the fiscal year on June 30 in a, in a, in a good position based on some of our contingencies that we've put into place. What we're really sort of focused on as a city is, it's only September. We got a lot of recovery still ahead of us. And we don't know what the end of this fiscal year looks like or even the following one. So our mindset has really been to create reserves in anticipation of shortfalls. If the shortfalls don't happen and the recovery is more expedited than maybe the recession was a decade ago, we would restore, we'll just have those funds go back to where they came from. Capital improvement, repair and replacement, et cetera. But I think that's that's an optimistic sort of vision. We think we are going to have to rely on those funds heavily as the economy rebounds. And that's going to be at least a year, if not more. So that's that's the mindset of the philosophy that Tina just walked you through is, you know, we anticipate expenditures increasing and revenues decreasing. And whatever we can put aside today to balance the budget over the next 18 to 24 months, you know, is is good, is good fiscal management from our perspective.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we move to B? Okay, Ahmed, B.
Great, I'm going to share you my screen. Okay, so I'm going to run through our budget, both the closing of the books and the budget for 2021. Before I do that, I'm going to try to cover a little bit about school, California school funding, which is kind of unique and and different than your typical funding mechanisms. And then we'll look at some of the comparables. And then we'll look again, the audit actuals that we closed the books for 1920, our fiscal year runs from July 1 through June 30. And so we just ended a fiscal year and we're starting our fiscal year for 2021. And we'll talk about some of the challenges we're facing. So in terms of funding, the schools in California are funded through what is called the local control funding for formula or LCFF. And there is a per student funding mechanism, and that's why school enrollment and average daily attendance are critical. They drive funding for schools. So that when there's growth in the community, our revenues increase. And then when there is an enrollment shrinking or loss of ADA, our our funding decreases. That funding mechanism is also then includes what is called a supplemental or concentration grant based on the number of EL, English language learners, free reduced range, foster and homeless students. We we are in a good community in terms of our, you know, our, you know, demographic breakdown. We're very fortunate. And so we have about 17, 16% of what is called unduplicated count in those categories. That provides the district with supplemental concentration, supplemental of funding, but not concentration, which would require concentration of about 55% or higher. We also receive other funds from the state outside of the LCFF and particularly special education and also some lottery funds. Together, that accounts for about 90% of our funding. That funding comes into the schools in two ways. It comes from local property tax. And once that formula is set, we know what the minimum guarantee for for our school district is. The first dollars are filled by local property tax. In our community, with a strong property tax assessment valuation, it's about 54%. Whatever remains, then the state comes in and provides the funding to bring us to that minimum level. So depending on the the community's property tax base, the state will either provide more or less funding. There are some school districts in the state, there are a few, mostly in San Mateo, Marin County, and a few in Santa Clara. that have what is called excess property tax. That is, the local property tax exceeds that minimum level set by state. They get to keep that excess. They don't share it with other school districts. And so you'll see how that will play out and why some school districts have a a much higher per student funding. The remaining approximately ten percent comes from federal federal funds, mainly restricted special ed and some other programs. And then we have our local funds, which are mainly through our our donations through the PTA boosters and the foundations. And then there are some local grants the district receives from the county and other locations as well. And finally, for many school districts, the other area that they leverage in local funds is parcel taxes. And PUSD, we don't have any parcel taxes. We do have bond measures that are that our taxpayers pay. But that pays for facility improvements such as measure I one and other previous bonds the district has. In terms of comparison of how we compare in terms of our expenditures per student, the district is slightly below the district average, it was around thirteen thousand. And this is for fiscal year eighteen nineteen. We'll, once we get the updated data, we'll share that as well. But you'll see there are school districts within Alameda and Contra Costa that receive greater funding than the district. And that has to do with either they receive more supplemental funding and concentration due to their student breakdown. The dollars follow the students of need. Or they have local funding through partial taxes or other measures that are taken that that contribute to to having more dollars. In addition, you'll see that Palo Alto Unified, we just I placed that in there because they're a school district about the same size as Pleasanton Unified in Santa Clara. And you'll see that they are on a completely different, you know, level of funding. And that is because of their local property tax base exceeds the state minimum. In addition to that, they have parcel taxes and large foundation as more foundation givings. And this is going to become critical for PUSD as we try to retain, attract the best talent in the years to come as as cost increase and and revenues stay flat. We closed the nineteen twenty year. And again, as as we discussed, the LCFF accounts for the largest portion of our funding. And then the the state brings in the remainder. Last year, our total revenues was about one hundred and seventy five million dollars. And that saw a growth of about five percent in our LCFF. But our other revenue sources were 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 reduced. So we basically had a a flat revenue for twenty for twenty nineteen twenty. And then we spent, our revenue was about close to twelve thousand dollars per student. In our expenditures, we did have some planned deficit spending. And that level of deficit spending, you see about three point seven five eight million was significantly reduced towards the tail end of the year. The district took significant measures to reduce our expenditures in various areas due to the COVID pandemic. And so while we had planned increases in salaries and benefits which drove up our costs, we were able to find savings in the supplies and books areas to reduce some costs. And you can see that, you know, again, eighty five percent of our cost is in people because we're very people intensive endeavor in education. Looking at the twenty twenty one, our the state budget was heavily impacted by the COVID pandemic. However, the state did shield school districts from some of the heaviest cutbacks and held funding to the nineteen twenty levels, which did mean a cut for us because we did not receive the cost of living adjustment. So our 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 costs are increasing, however, our funding remained flat. The LCFF and state accounted for ninety three percent of our funding. And this does also include approximately six million dollars of additional federal and state CARES Act funding to help mitigate the the impacts of the remote learning and COVID to to schools. And so those funds are being utilized to assist with the remote learning through the through a variety of different support programs and and items that we're we're utilizing. We do expect local revenues to be impacted by the by by the pandemic. And that could impact, you know, some of our PTA and booster donations in in those areas. PPI donation is done in the rear, so they were able to donate their full allocated donation to the district, which was about seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. In our expenditures, we expend to plan to expend about one hundred and seventy three point six million dollars. Again, eighty five percent of that does go to salaries and benefits. This budget does include a five million dollars of reduction from our baseline. And we are projecting to do about one point five million dollars of deficit spending. And our and our plan is to be able to manage that in the coming years as well. So the expenditures, our expenditures continue to increase while our LCFF remains flat. And we have received, we are expending the additional funds to mitigate the impacts of the pandemic. None of the dollars above include any of our major capital projects under measure I one. Those are in a in a different fund. So what you see here is all operational costs, which does include the maintenance and operations and utilities and books and supplies, but not any capital improvement. So looking into the future, we we are going to face greater fiscal pressures. While we were shielded this year from some of the 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 harshest impacts, we do see that the looming state crisis will bear on school districts in in the in the out years twenty one, twenty two, twenty two, twenty three. You know, we have to look, when when will we go back to normal? And when we do, what will that look like? One of the ways that the state is managing their fiscal crisis is they are relying heavily on deferrals. And the way deferrals work is that the state promises to pay us our funding in another fiscal year. So we have to then have a cash flow issue so that for the coming year, there the cash to the state, the cash the state has indicated we would receive will actually come seven or eight months later. So the district will look at inner fund borrowing with its other funds and then also looking at the market for short learn short term loans as well. So we do find ourselves in precarious times by working with the community in the city. We're confident that we will find solutions to reduce the impacts to our students. So with that, that's our report and happy to answer any questions from the council of board members.
Do we have questions for Ahmed? No questions? Julie?
Okay, um, I just wondered if there was no purse update there? What your current situation is with?
Sure. So this is a great question. The district has the STIRS pension program for our certificated and the PERS for our classified employees. And so the as part of the state's budget for twenty twenty one, the governor was able to utilize his resources and one time monies to basically provide a reprieve for school districts for the current fiscal year and the following fiscal year and hold there our contribution rates at a flat. So we're not, we're not increasing our contributions at this at this moment. However, in the third year out, both the STIRS and PERS pension will will increase back. And because those plan, the the plans are supposed to be funded over a forty year period. So we will see increases in STIRS and PERS so that they meet their long term obligations.
Thank you. That's it.
Anybody else? Kathy?
Well, the only thing I'll say, it's I I don't envy Ahmed's job, you know, trying to find the balanced budget. And it's, it's, you know, we just all have to try to pitch in and help where we can to do what we can to minimize the impacts, but it's kind of sobering when you're at the whim of the state.
Jerry?
No, I think it's a pretty sobering to see what you're up against. And and I don't know where the city assistance can be, but I do know that we did create a line of credit for the district back in the great recession. And I'm sure that our liaison committee and then, of course, our council can discuss that and see whether that is something that we can reinstitute and bring back. But, you know, I I feel for you. I mean, I I it's a little more rosery rosier on the city side. But and we have our restraints as well. But yeah, it's a tough road in front of you. Thanks for the the update.
Carla?
I think there's some great comments that have been made. Yeah, we're we're all going to be saving money if we can for those rainy day funds and then belt tightening. And that's really, really difficult for leadership to have to even talk to our employees and our and some of the recreation options that I know that we've had to do. And I know you've got a more complex budget, but I'm just praying that COVID COVID is wrapping up soon and we can get back to normal, but I know that's not reality. But I do appreciate the presentation, Ahmad. You did, you do an excellent presentation. If you ever want to work for the city, no, I'm just kidding. I'm kidding.
Now we're gonna have to give him a huge raise.
Thank you, thank you.
Anybody on the school board, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. So this is why it's really, really, really important for us to have good relationships with our legislators. They have to understand our story. They have to know our real numbers, our narrative and individual stories about how this really affects us. I mean, during the beginning of the pandemic, I was, you know, on weekly calls almost with our legislators and giving them our exact numbers and our situation so that they could really advocate in Sacramento in the best way possible. So this is why this is so critical right now to have those relationships. So I think it's important for all of us that are elected to really know the real numbers, the real stories, the real picture, so that we can keep keep on them about this, so they can advocate for us. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Steve, I'll just make a really quick comment. I think both presentations were very good tonight, the city and the school district. School district, we've already kind of heard, so. But very good presentations, a lot of information. And with the school district, you know, a lot of unknowns out there. And, you know, we have to balance a budget before we know exactly what our funding is going to be. And it's been very fluid from the state. So I hope people understand that, that we really, our 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 district staff does an amazing job doing the best we can with what we know. And I think the board has all worked worked very well together with our superintendent as well. And, you know, providing the best education we can with the money we we get. And Jamie's point was spot on too about maintaining relationships with our legislators and trying to advocate for the funding we really deserve in this state. So that's all I have to say, but thank you.
Okay, Joan?
Okay. Um, sure, just briefly. So one of the things that Ahmad didn't mention is that while we may not have a rainy day fund, we have put into place policy that increases our reserves beyond our reserve for economic uncertainty, which is a very small amount, three percent for us set by the state that we actually never get to spend, even if we need it. So, you know, we, the team has really worked really hard to put in place some some structures that are going to help us move forward and help us, you know, continue to to look for, you know, look for those opportunities. And and I I was just struck by tonight by, you know, how, you know, I I know all of us know someone who just sold their house and had five offers over asking and, you know, went in two days and all that kind of stuff. And as and as housing stock turns over, it gets reassessed at the higher market value and the city gets to collect an additional share or an increased amount of property taxes. And many times when I talk to community members, they think that, oh, that means that you, the school district, get to have additional property taxes too. And and even though Ahmad went over that, I think it's just really important to reinforce that, that no, that's not true. It does help our cash flow because then the dollars that are collected locally, we don't have to wait for money from the state from. So it does help us in that regard, but it doesn't increase the dollars that we receive overall. That that level is set for us by the state and it it just helps the state not have to backfill the dollars to us. So just, you know, I I think it's it's just something that's really challenging to continually explain to community members why we live in such a wealthy community. And, you know, those those property, those that turnover of that housing stock is due in large part to the attractiveness of our community and our excellent school district. And yet we don't actually benefit directly in terms of revenue at the school district. So I'm just really proud of our staff and the work that they that they've done. And in navigating this really challenging time where we have been, we're basically given an IOU by the state. We were told to count the count the dollars as revenue, but you're not going to get them until the following year. And if it and if it's evidenced anything like the last recession, the great recession, it could be over several years before they pay us back the money that we've already spent on teachers who are teaching your children. So stay tuned, we'll have another report in December when we do our first interim budget while I know a little bit more information, so.
Mark, anything?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay. About, I think everybody else has commented, my my last comment would be, thank you for all the work that everyone has put in. I think as as you know, that the city and school districts are the best around. Certainly, it's the latest niche has Pleasanton, the eleventh top district in the state, the top district in Alameda County. We have the two top high schools, two of the three top, number one and two of the three top middle schools, the top elementary school. And so we're very proud of that and we do that with limited budgets, but with a lot of hard work by our teachers and a lot of hard work by our cabinet and certainly Dr. Hagland. And and certainly Pleasanton is a great place to live and and the two go hand in hand. So I would encourage the city and the district to please keep communicating and work together because together we're strong, separate, we are not. So with that, I think the meeting is adjourned unless there's no one, no other public comments.
No. Steve, I would like to make.
No, there's no public comment on this.
Okay, go ahead, Julie.
We don't have a matters initiated on the agenda, which is something the city usually does. And I just wanted to take a moment very quickly, say, I have, would really like to ask if we can work something so that in future we have ten, five council and five trustees, but the agenda only receives input from four out of the ten members. And I would really appreciate us opening that up for our future joint meeting that it comes back to our bodies so that we all are given an opportunity to have input on this agenda. I know that at the liaison meeting, you guys talk about it, but I'm not even allowed to attend that meeting and have input at that meeting. I'm concerned that the very important discussions about dare and SROs is right now identified as being held at the liaison meeting. And again, that's four members out of a body of ten people. And so I'd really like us to. And so I'd really like us to revisit that so that those important issues are really receive more input from all of us. And so my specific request is it'll have to be discussed at our independent bodies, but arranging so that in future, the agenda receives input from all ten of us, future agendas. Thank you, that's it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'd like to sort of echo kind of what Julie was saying, but I was under the impression that we were going to have a joint meeting specifically around SRO and DARE. Because I for one need to hear the city side and the school district side at the same time.
I would, I would however mention that this is not on the agenda tonight.
Right, I know, but yeah. For the future, could we, it would be great to have an agenda item on that with both council and board members.
And the community side.
Right, we're not making a decision, Joan, we're just, we're. And at council meetings, we do have at the end of the evening an opportunity to discuss the public's business in public. That's what we're doing and we're not making any decisions.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Bye.